I am going to be making some adjustments to the agenda. I would like to move the visitors' comments after the budget presentation because I'm sure people might have comments around that. So, calling the meeting to order. And do we have any announcements at this point?
No.
Okay. We'll go right to approval of minutes from March 2nd, 2015. So, when someone's ready, I'll take a motion for that.
I'll move to the further minutes from what is it? March 2nd, 2015.
Any discussion on those minutes? Yeah, that's right. That's right. It was only three of us. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. We have the extension of TMS contract. So, the contract expires this summer and we have to do a renewal in the April timeframe. And so, we do have a contract in front of us. I would recommend that we do a vote to extend this contract for a year. So, from July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
What is the cost? That's easier.
Sixty-five thousand. This is the -- that's right here. I was gonna pass up.
So, this is the same?
Yeah.
Just for this year?
Yeah, and we're just going to extend it. Oh, did you want to see that?
Okay.
And Judy, there's no adjustment rate is the sixty-five?
As far as I know.
Where is that?
Same price. Aren't you just confirmed it's the same price?
Where is that with your discussions with the town over this?
Well, that's actually that's what I'm gonna ask. Where are we at with that? Because it may come up. Given that we are in the middle of some conversations with the town for the shared services, do we want to proceed with a one-year extension or do we want to look for an opportunity to continue that conversation and therefore extend this for a few months at a time? If it's possible at all, I don't know.
I think with this contract, it is an annual renewal at this point. And I think, you know, with those shared services discussion, we have to wait till an article goes to the town to see if we can do shared services. And then, once that happens and it gets approved, then we'd be able to look at different positions for shared services, whether it's the business manager or any other position that we might want to look at. So, as you know, we have several questions outstanding around this position here that I think it would take, if I had to guess, it would probably take a year to iron out. That's my, you know, I recommend that we extend this for a year.
And you might be right that it might take that long. My understanding is that there will be an article at this upcoming town meeting to get a waiver from that MGL clause. To be able to proceed with this, if that's the case, and if it doesn't really take a year, then we'll have to wait a year because we're gonna be bound by this contract. I'm actually, I don't have any preference one way or the other because I know that we've been talking about the shared services for a while. And I don't really want to put ourselves in a position where we don't have services for whatever reason. But I'm only asking from a goodwill perspective, given that we did not really have any communication with the select board on this one. Because once we sign this one, it's signed for one year, that's basically.
It's one year.
Was there ever any discussion about, regarding budget issues, is there anything that would save us some money or the schools some money?
I don't think there is any.
Not at that price.
Not at what price?
Sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, but from the town side, the shared service position, did you talk about money at all?
No, there wasn't, there wasn't gonna be any. The initial discussions was that there wasn't gonna be any large savings, or I would say savings on the school side. We still have to offer up our share and it would be.
But only asked because of what Emery said about the goodwill. I thought I watched Channel 15, one of the select meetings, two of the three, said something about why have we talked about it because it certainly would save the town and the school money. So, what does that mean?
We don't know. We don't know for a couple of reasons. One is that we did not really go out for a bid or anything like that. So, we don't really have any money discussion in front of us. Number two, I think we deliberately deferred that discussion after this was approved by the town meeting so that we were able to proceed with this conversation. At least that was the, there was a feedback. Were you at that? No, he's a.
I was not at the shared services meeting.
You were not. Yeah, you were not.
I was at one of them.
Yeah. So, again, I don't really want to put ourselves in a position where we don't have any services. And I can't really guarantee because there was no conversation around monetary benefits. I can't really guarantee that there will be any benefits despite what's been said at the select board meeting apparently. I can't guarantee or vouch for any savings. The only thing that I'm asking is, since we did not officially wrap this up and agree one way or the other with the select board, and since we were in the middle of some conversations with them, do we want to postpone this or do we want to just do it for a few months that will allow us to continue the conversations on shared services? Otherwise, if we signed this today, which, you know, is fun again, it's another way of doing it, we're basically bound by this contract for one full year. In which case, the conversation about shared services would be moot or it would continue with really no, no result for another year because we can't do anything outside this contract.
Well, my understanding, if I may, is that we're not just talking about financial services and shared services. So, I don't think it precludes the shared services conversation to continue.
This was a primary component.
That was the first one that we talked about. And, you know, Emery, to be very fair, that we tried to engage in several conversations through email and set up meetings and everything else. And, you know, that didn't go very far, as you know, over the past year. And, you know, then there was a meeting not too long ago. I sent you a list of the outstanding questions that had to be about a dozen questions easily that were still outstanding. To me, those have not been resolved. And, you know, for an annual contract of sixty-five thousand dollars, I don't think that will save, you know, if we were to go in with shared services for the business manager, for the town, I don't think it would save the school anything right now, the school district. You know, we have a contract, you know, in front of us. And it's for the next fiscal year. I think as a committee, we need to decide what would be best. And if we're doing shared services, is it this position here that we would want to move forward with or would we be looking at a different position?
What do you mean by that?
Another position for shared services besides the business manager.
If I can just share with that process, even if it is voted in at town meeting, because I understand your point, I understand your point. But what I'm thinking is, TMS has been doing our business management now and it's not like somebody, first of all, they're gonna have to go through the whole process and hire somebody. That's gonna take a while. But then that person would need to be brought up to speed. And I think for, especially with all our budgeting concerns, for the sake of stability, it would seem prudent to.
Well, I think before we talked about, I think with Chris Martin, Emery, the very first time that we met, that we would need a six-month transition period.
So, the year, so the year contract to me seems reasonable, seeing as somebody would need to be brought up to speed and we need stability for our budgeting.
Do you remember that?
Yes, I do. So, a quick question to clarify what's here. This is effective July 1st, 2015, is that correct?
Right, but we have to give, we have a notice of April.
I am authoritative, we have to let them know.
Okay. Given that we have a couple of meetings in front of us, would you be, would the school committee be willing to just find out if this is not going anywhere, then we as a committee that has been talking to another board in goodwill, we can say, well, right now, it's not gonna go anywhere, otherwise I completely agree with what you're saying. Then we can go ahead and what's good for the schools.
So, I think, you know, for shared services, to be able to offer that within the town, we need that article to pass, which would be in June. And so, there would be no guarantee that even if that article passed in June, that it would be this position that this school committee would even want to bring forward as shared services. So, I'm just wondering if this school committee would be interested, because when we discussed this, we had a different school committee makeup. And so, I'm wondering if the current school committee would be even interested in this shared service position for business manager? Or are we interested in having the opportunity to be able to do shared services in the future for any given position? So, so that's what I, and, you know, but we did, Dr. Hul did invite the select board and the finance committee to next week's meeting. Did you hear back?
I have not.
And so, I would say if we wanted to postpone it, we could postpone it to next week and make sure it's on the agenda. Would you be okay with that, Dr. Hul? Or do you know if Andy Poccat's waiting for this tonight or?
Obviously, I think TMS is waiting for this to happen. How fast a shared services agreement on business management services could take place in the relative scheme of things, I don't think it will be a fast process, to be honest.
So, it's really up to this committee on what, if you want a motion for that contract tonight, if you want to postpone it, and we'll put it back on the agenda for next Monday night.
I just think because of those comments I heard and because two, you know, two committees have been working on this, but yet have not reached a discussion point between, I think, at least all the select meetings and us, one more week would be worth, just for the goodwill of putting the issue to rest. So, no one says, you shut the door right away, we can't even talk about it further. So, if we can wait a week, it wouldn't bother me.
So, yeah, I would suggest that we wait another week and then wrap this up next week. Especially given that we have apparently until the 30th to respond to TMS and we can do it way before that if we can wrap it up next week.
Okay. So, Dr. Hul, can we put that on the agenda for next week?
Thank you.
That we'll propose, we'll postpone voting on this until next Monday. But who's gonna take the lead on this between now and next Monday? Or are we gonna say whoever shows up for the select board and bring it to them on next Monday or?
I, I'll take the lead. I'll send a message to the select board and tell them what we talked about and make sure that it's understood by next week. We'd like to reach a, some type of a decision as to what we're doing with this process. Otherwise, we need to sign a contract with TMS. So, I'll do that.
Okay. Because even, you know, even with that article for shared services, it can go, the way I understand it, that article is very generic enough that it's not specific to a position. It's just that the town and the schools can enter in discussion around shared services.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll postpone that vote. Okay, the next one we have here is, did you want to do the budget presentation at this point?
It's entirely up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to go ahead with the budget presentation.
Why don't you do the budget presentation? Then we can open it up for any discussions of visitors assigned in. And then, we can jump back to the other.
Okay.
No, I don't wanna blind you. And the light is coming your way.
This is happening too.
This is just kind of a follow-up to last week's presentation on the budget and presenting to you some figures with regard to where we stood. And you asked the administrative team to come back to you with some proposed recommendations. And that's what tonight's is about. Just kind of a reminder about the budget lenses, that we're looking at three different types of budgets, level service, level funded, and then the gap budget as we know it. And that there's two perspectives on the budget as well, in terms of the all funds and the, what we know as the LEA, the local education agency. So, whatever happens with the all funds has an impact on the LEA. We talked about these budget scenarios last week, that the total budget from FY15, which includes the eighty-five thousand that was voted at special town meeting, is twelve million two hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty dollars. A level service budget, which means pretty much everything as status quo, adding in, you know, cost of living increases for employees, other fixed costs. We also did some net reductions, as you may recall, around scaling back a section of kindergarten and scaling back a position here at the high school. So, that brings the FY16 level service budget in at twelve point eight million plus a little bit. And so, that makes the difference at the local level, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, you know, as a round figure, which is about a four point six-two percent increase. If we were to go to a level funded budget, which means the same number in FY15 and FY16, this would have to come off the table, which would reduce this overall level service budget by that four point six-two percent. And then, after getting the numbers from the state and also the numbers from the town in terms of in-kind services, we also have this gap budget, which is this twelve point one million budget that has an impact on the local side of a decrease of six hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars, or it would take five point three percent of this level service budget off the table. So, that's kind of the quick review of what happened. So, you asked us to come in with some reductions, to take a look at what it would look like at level funded and what it would look like at the gap level. And I'm gonna tell you right out of the gate, we weren't even able to get to level funded with the cuts that we talked about and the cuts that we've talked about are pretty, are pretty severe in magnitude. So, let's talk first about special education. We've put seventy thousand dollars on the table for two reasons. We have a couple of students who have been in out-of-district placements that will be coming back to us. One is for certain and the other one is pretty much certain. But we also built some contingency into sped out of district tuitions. We've taken the contingency outwards. So, the consequence of doing that means that we would require a special town meeting to raise and appropriate any unanticipated expenses. A child we currently serve needs to go out of district, new family moves in, child needs out of district services. So, there's some risk in that because then you have to go back to special town meeting. But that was one thing we took a look at. Currently, each school has a halftime evaluation team leader. What we would do is reduce that down to just one full-time equivalency, which would also save about twenty-five thousand dollars. Transportation costs because of out-of-district tuitions decreasing would also increase, but obviously, that's no budgetary impact because of the in-kind services. If we decrease how much we spend, that decreases how much the town pays up. So, that's a real impact reduction.
Can you just quickly, seventy thousand dollars, that's how many students you said?
Two students would be returning to us and that also takes out a contingency.
Okay. Thank you.
We're not talking about maintenance and West Street School together, but each one was half a slide, so I say a little slide real estate. The craftsman position that is currently employed by the district is going to see a retirement in October. So, the plan would be not to fill that position and to fold it in with the director of maintenance. So, that would save thirty thousand dollars on the maintenance department. At West Street School, we talked about last week under level service, reducing one kindergarten section. We wanted to confirm before we pick a paraprofessional out that we weren't gonna need that paraprofessional somewhere else. We are not. So, that would be a reduction of seventeen thousand dollars for that kindergarten paraprofessional. Looking at the numbers for incoming grade two, you have forty-five students in three sections. Two sections would make it comfortable. It could be done. So, that was another reduction that we thought we would put at an approximate value of about fifty thousand dollars coming off the table.
So, on that, grade two, there's currently forty-five students in.
Grade one.
In grade one.
Yeah.
And so, we would not be able to take any school choice?
There have only been two applications, so potentially, those two could probably be folded in, but I would say probably none of them.
Okay. So, average class size about twenty-three?
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three. Yeah.
Is it, two questions. How does it compare to last year, the out-of-district? And is it typically now that families make the decision and therefore we should not really expect a major change to that number? Is that the correct statement?
To out-of-district or just school choice?
Out-of-district.
It's made by a team meeting of both the educators and the parents at the table.
Okay. How about the school choice?
School choice, this is usually about the time of year that parents make that decision about whether or not they're going to request school choice seats. So, we have received some requests. There comes a point where you have to kind of do a cost-benefit analysis with regard to school choice. For example, in kindergarten, we've had nine people express an interest in school choice, but nine school choice students will not offset a teacher's salary, a paraprofessional salary, and the operational costs of the classroom. So, it, from that perspective, it doesn't make sense fiscally to do that.
Is there a magic number? I mean, what?
You'd have, in the case of kindergarten, you'd have to fill in an entire classroom of school choice kids or that number. So, you'd be looking at eighteen to nineteen applications.
So, in other words, we're looking at bigger class size, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's only thirty-eight children that registered for kindergarten, so we're looking at, you know, eighteen, nineteen, with a teacher and a paraprofessional in the classroom.
So, back to grade two. So, average class size around twenty-three. Really no room for school choice, maybe a little bit. But in your experience, do you see that we will risk grade two students going out of district with that size class?
I don't think so. Twenty-two, twenty-three is the norm in most other districts at that grade level.
And I know you can't get into the details of this, but with that grade two class, are we going to have a teacher in para in each class? Do we have a high number of special ed that's integrated in grade two right now?
When we sat this morning as an administrative team, that was not raised as a concern. You know, we did a lot of work on this last week and then sat again this morning just to make sure that the full administrative team was comfortable with the numbers that we were going to present. And that was not raised as a concern. So.
And the kindergarten paraprofessional, why are we only getting, losing that paraprofessional?
Because we already factored in the teacher in level service and we held off on this until we figured out whether or not that position would be needed elsewhere and it was decided that it was not.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the absence of that paraprofessional, no problem. When we no longer have a paraprofessional, no service will be impacted, education will not be impacted?
In the kindergarten classrooms, each classroom is staffed by a teacher and a paraprofessional. So, if we lose a section of kindergarten, that's one teacher and one paraprofessional. And that paraprofessional is not needed elsewhere at the moment. This was the tougher set of recommendations to make to you. And obviously, you may have other ideas, but we're just gonna put it out there for you. How we started this conversation is through the issues that are at West Street School. And essentially, we have a basement that's wet. It's wet right now. And there are staff and some students that are down in that basement. And we really need to get them out of that basement. So, as we began to talk this out a little more, we also realized that there was cost-saving and demand of realignment in the interim until we get a new school building. So, the first thought was to move grade three from West Street to East Meadow, just so that there's some flexibility within space and how we can utilize space at West Street School.
Before you jump to the next bullet point, so, and I meant to ask you this earlier, but with that, moving grade three, does that impact the building project at all?
No, because this is, I'm recommending, we are recommending this as a temporary fix until the building project goes through. So, she said with full optimism in her voice.
Okay.
So, that, the ripple effect is then you wind up moving the sixth grade students from East Meadow to Granby Junior Senior High School in a self-contained, gorged and duffing the rest of the building. Mr. Cavallo and I did a walk today to kind of take a look at potential spaces for that to happen. So that we would move those children here for the duration until the building project, until a building gets built.
How many students? Oh, sorry. I was just gonna ask, how many students are in sixth grade?
About eighty.
Eight.
There is no cost to the configuration of space when we move students from West Street to East Meadow, East Meadow to high school, given that they probably, their needs will be different, we're gonna need different types of arrangements for them?
Well, as we began to, as we further talked this out, and obviously, once a new school is built, we can then restore a pre-K through six and a seven through twelve configuration. As we began to talk this out as an administrative team, what we then discovered was that we can actually save a significant amount of money by doing this. Because of gaining some efficiencies by incorporating sixth grade into the middle school, there could be a reduction of two classroom teachers, which would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars. There would be a reduction of one special education teacher, which would be another seventy thousand dollars, that's a retirement that we just would not refill. Elementary art, music, physical education, we would reduce to point seven FTE each for approximate savings of about forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And because sixth grade would be coming here rather than them being at East Meadow and there would be a sixth through eighth middle school band, a high school band, the other thought was to reduce instrumental music to a point five FTE and start instruments in fifth grade rather than fourth grade. And that would be the feeder program to the high school. You need to understand, none of these recommendations were made lightly. This was a very somber and difficult conversation on the part of the administration.
So, again, this is, these are the savings, estimated savings. There is no estimated cost to.
Other than moving people in that?
But what's the cost of that move? And the configuration of space and anything else that might not be considered?
Configuration of space would be the third graders would occupy classrooms that we're in, used by sixth grade, and sixth grade can be incorporated into the high school, space-wise. So, it's basically just getting boxes packed and moved. And there would be some, you know, incidental cost of that, but.
Okay. Thank you. The last two bullets, the music program especially. Last year, we, our conversations were around not making changes, reductions, to the detriment of the entire specials program. So, how will this impact those programs? What would mean, for instance, by point seven FTE at the elementary level plus half FTE at the instrumental?
Right. With the sixth graders being here, they would be serviced here. So, there would be less at West Street, the same at East Meadow, and sixth grader incorporated here. So, that would have minimal impact.
So, we're not talking about reducing time for art, music, and physical education at the elementary school level. It's because we're moving the sixth grade is where the savings is. We're not cutting back.
Right. The only thing that would be cut back is, or I shouldn't say would be cut back, is we'd have to think differently about it, is the physical education piece is that they're currently teaching an extra health class that's like about twenty minutes. So, there's not a whole lot that gets accomplished. In other districts that I've been in. Um, in other districts that I've been in where there's not a health class, that gets incorporated into, incorporated into the physical education curriculum, where we really look at physical education as wellness, more than sort of throw the ball kind of thing.
And I'll tell you, over the years, over the years, that has morphed, you know, to different. Sometimes it's, you know, physical ed with health to, we've done, you know, separate health classes to, you know, phys ed. So, it, it's been, I don't know if we found the perfect, uh, recipe for, but it has evolved.
And I've worked in two other districts where health was part of physical education, where it was considered a focus on wellness, and it's worked well. So, we're confident that we could cover-
Well, I think that's how it is at the high school, really. Yeah, that's how it is at the high school.
Yeah, so.
I'm trying to understand how we can reduce it by point seven and it not impact the program. I guess I'm confused.
Because again, the sixth graders are gonna be serviced up here. Right, so there'll be less elementary classes.
We're not reducing it by point seven. We're reducing it to two point seven.
Point seven, yeah, so it's a point three reduction.
And what was, from one FTE to-
Well, actually, it's either, it's between point nine and point nine-five.
Because there was a reduction last year.
Yeah, a small reduction.
Yep. In time.
Right.
That was a reduction in time. Where this, if I understand it correctly, is not a reduction in time for the elementary school. The savings is because sixth grade's coming here.
Okay. I mean, I don't wanna bog down the conversation because I know you have other slides and we're gonna be trying to it, right? But I have serious concerns when it comes to, uh, the specials. Um, we are already at a very, very, very minimal level of specials. I just want to make sure and be convinced that we're not gonna be impacting the program. And we're not gonna actually do something that will not necessarily impact the program, but, uh, you know, very, or, uh, otherwise, cause the program to implode. Uh, 'cause we don't really have enough hours here for, for the teachers that we have in our programs. So, it's something that I would like to talk about in all the more detail later on.
Well, this definitely impacts the teachers. It doesn't-
And that's, that's what I would like to talk about.
So, it impacts the teachers, but it doesn't impact the students.
Well, it impacts the students when you're talking about a feeder program in fifth grade as opposed to-
Well, that bottom one, that one.
Yeah, and that.
But not the, I'm talking about the third bullet point.
That's a, that's a pretty big change.
Yeah. And trust me, I walked in the specialist's shoes for eleven years. The school pains me.
Yeah.
But, what do you do? Put dirty kids in a classroom? You know, those are the kinds of choices we're talking about at this point in time. So, if you look at the total proposed reductions, the out of district reductions, the reduction of the evaluation, uh, team leader, the combination of positions on maintenance, the reductions in kindergarten para in grade two at, uh, West Street School, and the realignment, um, we're looking at a total proposed set of reductions of four hundred forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And after a rather lengthy pause, when we got to this number, we stopped. Because to do anything else will dismantle the district. I'm gonna be blunt honest. This'll do some dismantling of the district.
Yeah, this is already doing it.
Right.
This is already doing it.
Right. This is not something we arrived at lightly. We did what you asked us to do, which was to try and come to level funded and gap. We can't even get that far, so.
So, first of all, thank you and the administration-
Yes, thank you.
-for getting us this far.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we, I think everyone on the school committee understands how painful this is, just to have those discussions.
Right. And my concern here is that even if this sticks moving forward, and we're faced with similar challenges next year, you are talking large numbers in classrooms, 'cause we have nowhere else to go, nowhere else. So, I wanna show you some analyses that I've, uh, done, just so that you also know. The total FTE reductions, both in level service and the reductions proposed here, is nine point seven people. I don't know how you have a point seven of a person, but, um, that's what the number worked out. So, almost ten people. Actually, more ten, more than ten people when you talk about the actual people impacted. That's an awful lot of people.
So, one thing that I would like, uh, Dr. Hulow for next Monday, if possible, over the past five years, could you get us numbers of the number of staff from five years ago, four years ago, three, two, one?
Sure.
And-
I'll see how far back I can get, a little help from-
So that we, we have some sort of graph showing that, or actually, I would say not bringing in staff, or we've been cutting in.
Mm-hmm.
This is how many positions we have lost over the past five years.
Okay, I'll see what I can, uh, find out about that, um.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, we're talking about class sizes getting, uh, larger.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's something that we, last year, it was on top of our list. Earlier this year, it was on top of our list, that we were not going to make major changes to our class sizes. Um, also, you brought up the school, uh, building project. In that school building project, the class sizes, I would like to see, just, I, I was looking at my notes, but I can't find it immediately. I would like to see whether or not we're staying consistent to what we are, uh, doing within that project versus what we are talking about here, as far as the sizes. Uh, but aside from that, there is, I'm assuming there's a component that is pupils per teacher as well, right? Just, we're talking about pupils per classroom, which is one of the elements and constraints that we're talking about. There's also a level of load that all these teachers have to endure.
Correct.
Did we, I'm sure you did, but just, uh, for my, uh, own confirmation here, uh, did we take a look at that and do we still believe that it's at a manageable level? Pupil per educator?
Yeah, because we're talking, again, in kindergarten, we're talking, you know, eighteen, nineteen students with a teacher and a paraprofessional. That is manageable. I've seen districts where it's higher than that. Uh, second grade, again, we're talking twenty-two, twenty-three students in a classroom. That's imminently doable. I wouldn't go any higher than that.
And yet, the variable is, we don't know what the incoming kindergarteners may, may be as far as school choice goes.
Well, regi- school choice, we have nine applications in front of us right now.
So far.
Right. And that's not enough to sustain a third section.
Right.
And this is usually the period of, of the year when that pretty much happens. By April vacation, people usually have made their decisions.
So, um, in the fifteen years that I've been on the school committee, I know for elementary, we tried to keep to twenty-one or less. So, we're still with, I would think, within that number to some degree.
Yeah, a couple.
Um, um, kindergarten, though, we have nine school choice applicants today.
Right. You would lose money if you opened a third section for nine? I'm just-
We would. Um, I, I'm not arguing that point. It's just, usually when you get the student's school choice in a kindergarten first grade, they're long-term in the system.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have to look at it not just short-term, but long-term.
I agree.
And so, you know, it's one of those things, are we cutting off our nose in spite of our face? And so.
Great.
And that's only this year. What happens next year if we get another twelve or fifteen that wanna come into the district?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So, we do need to be considering long-term as well.
Right.
Right, because we might have to, I'll say, absorb it somehow at kindergarten, hoping that, you know, as they go further down the school district, you know, in, in the grades, you can absorb more in a classroom and especially at the, uh, once they got to this school. But, there is cost behind that.
Right. You have to remember, we're targeting five sixty-six or five sixty-seven for level funded, and we're targeting six hundred and forty-five thousand for the gap budget. So, we are a hundred and twenty thousand dollars away from even level funded. And we're a couple hundred thousand dollars away from closing that gap.
Okay.
So, that's unfortunately the reality of this whole thing. Last week, um, the chair of the finance committee was here and, um, gave us his worksheet. Um, I asked TMS to do an analysis of that worksheet so we could see if we sort of agree. And I know this is teeny tiny print, um, but I will just, uh, sort of summarize it here. These voted expenses, the total voted school budget, the finance committee numbers would be numbers that we would agree with, okay? Then, as you remember, um, that worksheet had the contribution to the schools, the school transportation, the Pathfinder assessment, and the health insurance. Um, and again, these would be numbers with which we would agree.
But they're not school, let's clarify, though. If we were to go back, Pathfinder assessment truly is not a school, uh, expense. If that's a town, but it's, it's under-
Right.
-school expense.
Right.
That's a town expense.
Right. And this is, TMS's notes is that, to remind you, that number eight and number nine are, uh, non-net school spending numbers. They don't figure into the chapter seventy formula because the funds are not available to the school committee.
Right, right.
So, that's the first thing. Um, as far as sev- number seven's concerned, that's mandatory non-net school spending, and that's paid by the town. Now, this additional, uh, group of sort of outstanding overdrawn accounts and deficits, uh, I did talk with both the former superintendent and as well as TMS, and we believe that this was taken care of at the end of fiscal fourteen in terms of reclassification expenses and whatever else. I did call, um, the town administrator today and asked him, you know, why, why these numbers are still in there. Um, he's going to, uh, I have not seen them yet, but he is going to forward me his balance sheets so that we can take a look at what we believe has been reclassified and look at what his balance sheets have to state. I asked him to give me as, I asked him if these were cumulative over the years. He seemed to indicate that they were. Um, and so, again, I asked him to give me as far back as he can go with this, because if I'm looking for a needle in a haystack, I know, I need to know what haystack I'm looking in.
Yeah.
So, um, and find out what, what the story is with that and why we seem to be carrying this on as an additional burden. Um, so, that's, that's where we are with that. I know there were a lot of questions, uh, on the part of the committee and myself when we saw this for the first time last Monday. So, that's why, uh, TMS did the analysis for us, and this is what, uh, came back.
So, Dr. Hulow, do you and TMS plan on meeting with Chris Martin on these numbers?
Yes, as soon as I get his balance sheets, and then I can begin to look in back history, um, with Mr. Donahue.
So, nowhere in the file? Yep. Someone assumes they were taken care of. There's no documentation that shows them-
There is, and so, uh, that's what I'm searching through. I have some old emails from Dr. Rodriguez, and we're gonna look back through some old, uh, correspondence between the town administrator and TMS and superintendent to see where this disconnect seems to be and see what we can get down to as a real number.
And we have the, um, that all committees' strategy meeting on the thirteenth?
Yes.
So, TMS will be there and, as well, right? So, we can all-
Right. Um, again, I'm just waiting on what Mr. Martin sends to me in terms of balance sheets, so I know where to start, you know, really unpacking this, so.
They were invited, the SLUT board and the finance committee were invited.
I understand.
They have not responded yet.
It's just now it's, you know, we're talking to this one, we're talking to that one, you know, he said, she said, we need to be in the same room here.
Well, we need them to respond to the invite.
My understanding is that the SLUT board will be here, that these two members will be here.
Okay.
So, I did some other analyses. I found a tool, um, called mass analysis, which, um, kinda gives you some flavor for analysis of income and expenses. And what I did is I was working through the tool, it sort of popped up some towns that are somewhat similar to Granby in the Pioneer Valley. Um, and these are figures that go back a little bit because of a time lag from the Department of Revenue and also the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in getting these numbers all published. But, when you look at FY thirteen total expenditures, here's Granby. Um, fifth from the bottom amongst towns in the valley in terms of total town expenditures. And the number, we can hover right over it.
Is this total town expenditures on the school system?
Uh, both town and schools.
Total town budget.
Okay.
Yeah, the town, total town budget, yep. Um, when you look at our per pupil expenditures, this red line represents the state average, which is fourteen and change. Granby is fourth from the bottom in terms of per pupil, and that's just school expenditures. How much it costs to educate a child in Granby? Um, so then, we looked at financial strengths, um, which is another metric that you can sort of look at. And I just want, just to draw your attention, these are, again, a couple of years old because of what, uh, goes on in terms of certified free cash. You can see that Granby is third from the top, uh, with a little over, uh, two million in free cash currently, or as of FY twelve. Um, that's the latest data could get on these numbers. Um, when you look at stabilization, we are at the top with almost four million in the stabilization fund.
We have to remember that back then we had the dump income fund.
Granted, but, um, when you look at the total resources available to the towns, we're over six million dollars of money sitting in reserves.
That's our rainy day fund. I think the rain is here.
I think it's raining, with all due respect.
Cause there's no other plan for it. There's no others to plan for.
For the record, um, I think it should be more than an invitation to this SLUT board. I mean, you know, we, we operate the largest budget in the town. I, I don't really think it should be an invitation.
We cannot force another committee to come to our meeting.
I think we have more influence than, than just inviting them at that point.
I think they'll be here.
Yeah, Emery said, Emery said that too will be attending. It would be nice if they got back to Judy Hulow as our new superintendent. I think that's just out of respect.
Here's a real interesting statistic. When you look at the percentage of resources to the overall budget of the town, once again, Granby's at thirty-one percent of overall expenses in available resources to apply. The next highest one is Hadley, and that's eighteen percent. And, Mr. Donahue, can you refresh my memory about what is said with, particularly with regard to bonding? What is a good number to look at in terms of a percent?
The goal for most communities is usually a, a total reserves of ten percent of budget.
So.
We're doing very well there.
We're doing well.
You see where I'm going with this?
We, we shouldn't be questioning them for the new school project, you know, about the-
Well, this, this, this has come up many times.
Well, here's the thing, is we've-
Pointing out something that's pretty relevant.
Yeah, here's the thing. We're proposing reductions of four hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. In order to get to this gap number over here, we would need an additional two hundred three thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars from the town. I don't see us asking for an additional tax levy. I see us asking for something to come from reserves. We're talking about a one point six-six percent increase to just get to the gap number with some assistance from the town. I don't think that's unreasonable. I really don't. The, the, the cuts that we have proposed and the things that we're bringing to you, we're not bringing them to you because we want to. We're bringing them to you because we have to. And my real concern is beyond this fiscal year or next fiscal year. What happens in fiscal seventeen? We have to cut another four hundred and somewhat thousand dollars. It's gonna come from the classroom. There is no place else to take it from. So, I just, I, I, I don't know what else to do at this point. I, I went around and met with all of the, the, the three schools' faculties today so that they were aware of what we were gonna present to you tonight, because I don't think it's fair, when we're talking about people's livelihoods, to not have that conversation with them. I gotta tell you, it was three pretty somber meetings.
So, just because there are so many numbers, which one is the number that we come up with after all the reductions that you presented earlier?
Right here. It's this number here. This is what this would look like, is twelve point three eight million. If we wanna get all the way down to- If we want to get all the way down to the 12.18 million, this is what we need to the town, from the town, to close the gap. But that means all of these cuts or some number, and this is your purview as a committee, so you can say, "We don't want cut X, we want, you know, explore some other cut." And you could certainly say that to us tonight and give us some marching orders to go off and do something different. That's what this whole process is about.
So-
This is your purview.
So, thank you very much for being so transparent and meeting with all the staff and making the visits today. I'm sure those were not easy visits.
It felt like the Grim Reaper.
And it's really unfortunate that we're in this situation.
Yep.
Once again, it seems like every year, over the past several years, we've been in this situation. And you propose reductions.
Mm-hmm.
Whether I like them or not, I don't know what else could be done. You know, that's the whole thing. So, you know, I, as the chair of the school committee or just a school committee member, I'm looking to you and the administration of what you're recommending, and I'm sure you didn't take this lightly.
No, this is, to be honest, the least harm.
I definitely don't agree that, you know, it's just unfortunate that we'd have to make such cuts. I do want to open it up for discussion, and I'm going to ask, do we want the discussion now, or do we want to open it up for visitors' comments first?
Just a kind of reminder about the timeline, and then I'll go back to the reduction slide so you have it to reference, that we would be doing a budget workshop next week at 6:00 PM, to which the Selectment and Finance Committee have been invited. And then on April 27th would be the public hearing on the budget, and obviously you will need to vote a number at that point, because I've been told that a number needs to be given to the town by May 1st. So, that's where we are at this particular point in time. So, again, I would relish your input on this, but let me get back to that cut slide.
So I just want to ask the school committee, do you want visitors' comments first, or do you want to have a discussion first?
Yeah.
Let's hear from our visitors.
So, Kathy, do you have anyone signed in for visitors' comments? And I'll just start from the top. The first one's Lisa White.
Mike, I signed in because I wasn't sure if I could talk if I did. So, I just want to say, I work at West Street School, and Mrs. Hul, I really appreciate your conversations with us and how frank you are.
And then, let's see, who do I have next? John White? Is it John White?
That's me, Mike.
Oh, I didn't even see you there, John.
Dr. Hul, two things. One, the reduction of the 4.4 FTEs with the instead of junior, senior high school. What were those positions specifically? Can you share that, or did I miss that?
It would be a reduction of two classroom teachers, probably one at East Middle and one at the high school.
Do you know what grades those would be at the high school?
Probably most likely fifth grade and somewhere within the middle school. We have not ironed out all of the details yet, only because we wanted to see if this was a path that the school committee wanted us to travel. And if this is, you know, they want more detail, certainly we'll go back and try to do the full-blown detail between now and next Monday.
Can I add something? The current, there's currently four fifth-grade teachers, but there's only three fourth-grade classes, so there's technically only three fifth-grade classes next year.
Right. And you have to understand that we also need to look at, again, if this is the school committee's pleasure for us to do, we will need to look at both licensure and seniority in terms of what actual person winds up being cut as a result of this. And we've, again, not done that work because we wanted to wait to see what the school committee wished for us to do. The rest of it is a reduction in a special education teacher, and then some drop in the amount of time that specials, art, music, and phys ed and instrumental music would be servicing students.
How many students in fourth grade in each class?
Fourth grade in each class, there's 21 and 22.
Okay. Thank you.
And those are the visitors that were signed in.
May I?
Sure.
Is that all right?
Yeah. Go ahead, Laura.
I just have a couple of number questions. What is the per pupil expenditure for the current school year?
That number has not been released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education yet.
So Granby doesn't calculate their own? Do you have 2014?
For this current year, I'd have to go in and look at the formula that the department uses, because the official numbers are driven by formulas on categories of expenditures. So I'd have to use that formula to calculate that.
Do you have 2014? Or is it the same situation?
It's the same situation. The department has not yet released those.
Okay. And-
So I'd have to do some further analysis to know that.
Okay. And the student enrollment for this current school year?
Is 882.
Okay. And for special ed, school choice students that come into our district, what, how many students come in?
For special education?
Uh-huh.
I don't have that number at the top of my head, so I couldn't answer you that right now.
Okay. And how about out? School choice, special ed, out?
I don't have that number either. At this moment in time, I'd have to find it.
So do I-
If I may also, we do get reimbursement. If a child comes into Granby on school choice and they have special needs that we address within the school setting, we get proportional reimbursement for that above and beyond the base school choice reimbursement.
Okay.
And the same thing from our, in our school choice out fund, that's dedicated on what they call the cherry sheet, which is the sort of the state revenue-
Right.
-in and out. If a Granby student attends Belcher Town on school choice and has some needs above and beyond the regular classroom placement, Belcher Town will get reimbursed at an incremental amount above the $5,000 figure. For the most part, on the state level, school choice expenditures are wash. There's no cost hit to the state because the money that we get in comes from other towns, and when our students leave, it's subtracted from our revenue.
Well, the reason I was asking, because Dr. Bradrigas, I know had a strong focus on our special ed program here in Granby. And I was just wondering, over the years since the enrollment has fallen, how that has affected special ed enrollment in our district, not state, not, you know, just specifically Granby?
So for school choice, we've seen an increase, I believe, in the number.
Yes.
Or up to, like this year, I think around 134 school choice students. And those are not all special ed students, but in general, we have 134. But we've also seen a increase, I believe, this year of-
In the number of students going out.
Number of students going out. And, you know, we've been talking about that as a school committee, but also, you know, there's many opportunities right here in the valley-
Right.
-that weren't there 10 years ago. Like Pioneer's, you know, Performing Arts, Nextdoor here.
Yeah, it's not just school choice, there's also charter school, right? In terms of Pioneer Valley Performing Arts School, at which the town does get some reimbursement for the tuition, but not full reimbursement, it's only partial. And we use that to offset what the town is paying out, because those charges actually happen on the town side. School choice and charter schools actually happen out of the town's budget, does not happen out of the school's budget. So you've got choice, you've got charters, and of course, now we have a private school here, and, you know-
I was just trying to understand if there was some creative reconstructing that could take place within special ed itself to help alleviate some of the budget issue. I'm just trying to get better understanding.
And we did take a look at all of that.
Oh, I'm sure you did. I'm just trying to understand.
No, and I think they did by that 70, I think that 70,000 reflects some of that.
Right.
Because they're bringing a couple students back that we were, that were outplaced, which would help. But Dr. Jefferson, if you can educate us all on, and I believe this is true, but when we bring in school choice students, we don't necessarily know they're special ed. Is that true?
Correct. School choice students coming in are really brought in on what would be a blind lottery. For example, if we had five slots and seven people applied, we would have to hold a lottery and randomly pick those five, and if they had special needs, so be it. We don't have a chance to audition the kids, or it's not a selection process of coming in. I will say that we've worked hard this year to have programs where we can have people stay in district and come back to district, so we're bringing the student back to the district for a program that we have. And in another case, we're able to maintain a student who, in another year, may have gone out. So those decisions and those programmatic things are done at all levels. Sometimes they don't show up on the sheet because a child that doesn't go out, we don't see that. They're just, they're again with us. But ultimately, it helps keep resources for other areas. And it's our, we're glad to do it. It's our legal and our moral commitment to provide education in the least restrictive environment. So we, our first choice is to try and have the program in the Granby schools to house-
Oh, understandably, absolutely. What do you think?
Would you like to sign in? Anybody? And I was just going to ask, so now that Dr. Hul has done her, the budget presentation, if there was anyone that would like to sign in, please do, and, you know, I'll get to you.
Oh, because I just need to get my mental card. I'm precious.
So should I just point out that you should be sitting up there?
Yes, I know, I just can't. It's all good.
And we have Karen.
Ms. Shaw.
I wasn't planning on speaking or asking a question, but something pertains possibly to my child. So we're thinking about, or the proposal is to maybe have sixth grade at the junior or senior school. And currently, there's four fifth-grade classrooms. Where they'll be, where, will there be four sixth-grade teachers going to the junior, senior high school, or are they thinking about reducing it to three?
There would be a reduction to three because some of the load could be picked up by middle school teachers.
So I'm Kristin Nagleira, I'm the union president as well as a teacher in the school system. And so my question to you, Dr. Hul, is, has there been any consideration on just going back to just having a principal at each school and taking net monies that would be used as an assistant and put back into the people who have face-to-face contact with students?
We have not talked about any administrative reductions at this particular point in time. I think there's a lot of variables with regard to that right at the moment, which we'll get into in a later agenda item.
Thank you, just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
So, I just want to clarify. So you're saying have one principal at each school?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what we currently have, except at the high school?
Right, at the high school, we have a principal and assistant.
So you're really only talking about the high school? I don't want, I don't want the public to think that at the elementary school levels, we do have assistant principals or anything like that-
No, they can pass, there's a two, but-
-where we don't. So I just want to clarify that everyone understands that we only have a principal and assistant principal here at the high school. The elementary schools, we have a principal.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Nobody else? We have a lot of people sitting out there. I would love to hear from anybody who has anything to say.
Please sign in.
Now is your opportunity. I would love to hear from everybody. Is that possible?
Why not?
So we have Christo. Dufran?
Dufran. So I am also a teacher in the system. I actually teach here at the high school. But I just wanted to just voice as a parent who's sending my child to this district, and I don't live in this district. So what I like about Granby is the small-town atmosphere, and I like that the teachers are really committed to the students. In other districts that I've been, either I've worked at, or I know my niece and my nephew are in, you don't get that face-to-face contact with the teachers as much. They don't work as hands-on with the students. So I guess we're trying to build a housing in Granby as well. We plan on building within the next two years, but one of the biggest concerns I've had is putting my kid through the system when they're taking teachers away from the students. So I guess that's one of my concerns. My son is in kindergarten this year, so in a couple years, he will face that impact of taking bigger class sizes. And when they're that young, reading and writing is so important. And when they don't have all that time to be with that teacher, to be one-on-one, they're going to fall behind. And so I guess that's what I worry about at such a young age. So that was one of my biggest concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Chris Webber.
I wasn't planning on talking either, but I came here mainly because I wanted to support the school system and see exactly what was going on. I am a proponent for the music program. I know it has brought a lot to my children, and they just came back from Washington, had a fabulous time. They do the Men Who Cook, which we volunteer for. It brings the community together, and I feel that, you know, with the cuts you're doing, you just keep cutting every year. And every year, there's less and less to cut. And I think at some point, the town needs to put forward and say, "The school system deserves better, because we can't cut anymore." And I am for the music program. I don't agree with cutting that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If we move on, does anyone have any other?
Mike, can I ask one question?
Yes, John White.
Dr. Hul, question for you. In your experience, should Granby be considering something like a bridge program for teachers who are nearing retirement, that they may be able to help with healthcare costs as they, until they qualify for Medicaid? Is that, I mean, if we're talking about drastic things that need out-of-the-box ideas, I don't know if that's an out-of-the-box idea, but-
Actually, that is part of what the town's in contribution is. If you look at, and again, I apologize for the size of the print, but this, there's a lot of information on here, but there is retired teacher health insurance that teachers can contribute to.
So someone who's a couple years away from retiring potentially could take advantage of that to kind of bridge them to their-
Right. But again, that's, we incur an expense on the town side that is an allowable expense to offset net school spending, which is what is expected to be contributed on the part of the local community to its schools.
But I think there's two questions there. One is healthcare costs between retirement and Medicare, which the town covers. And it's, we're one of, I think, about 35 communities that fund at the, at the state rate, at the Commonwealth rate of GIC. But the other, the other piece is teachers, after a certain number of years, reach a maximum retirement level.
Sure.
And that's, I think, the key factor in there. Once teachers reach that, they're free to retire if they're 59, or 60, or 61, and will still have healthcare costs covered and do that again.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so any other comments? If not, I'm going to really turn this over to the school committee for, and open it up for a discussion. We have a meeting next Monday, and hopefully we will have the SLUT board and finance committee there, at least one representative from each committee. So with that, I'm thinking, do we need to follow up with them?
I could certainly reach out to the two chairs. I will see them on Thursday night at a school building meeting anyway, so I'll reach out.
Okay. And will Chris Martin also be attending? Do you know?
I don't know.
Can we extend the invite to Chris?
Yep. He'll also be at the school building committee, so.
Would it be helpful if we put something in writing?
It has been in writing.
Yeah, I did it via email.
A letter from the school committee, perhaps?
Did the letter go to the Selectment individually?
Did the letter go to the selectmen individually?
No, it's sent to the two chairs of the two committees, telling them that we were extending an invitation for them and their committees to attend.
You'd have to assume they'll be here. I don't know what Emery said. I would assume they'll be here.
That's my assumption.
I'll try and confirm that on...
I mean, John was here last week. I can't imagine that. And he said that he would be here. I can't imagine that he won't be here anymore. My understanding is that Mark and Mary will be here as well. I think Lou has a conflict. But it looks like we will have at least representation, if not core, from both committees' boards. But we should, that doesn't mean we should not confirm with them that they're gonna be here.
Which I will do on Thursday night.
Because we have to make sure if it is that those meetings get posted.
Right. A and B, obviously, we want to have a setup that allows for us to sit at the table together.
Right. We have a discussion.
Just to clarify on the grade realignment, two classroom teachers that have been proposed now are grade two, which we talked about earlier.
Right.
And I have to assume then grade six, or five or six?
No, the grade two is separate from the realignment. That's in addition to the realignment.
So who are, okay, so who are the other two in the realignment?
So it would probably be a fifth grade teacher because there are, because of the way things would work.
Because they're three fourth grade, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So it'd be a fifth grade position, and again, that would have to work itself through the licensure and longevity issue or seniority issue. And then the other would be a reduction here in the middle school.
And what school would not have the special education teaching?
That would be West Street.
Yes.
Because we would go from, with a reduction of third grade potentially leaving, the number of students with IEDs as follows, what we might project would be within the caseload that a senior teacher would have. That's at West Street.
Yep.
And the specials that are reduced to .7, that's based on simply because there are less classrooms that they would have to teach?
To service at the elementary level. That's correct.
How many less classrooms does that?
It would be less the four sixth grades coming here, and less kindergarten and less a second grade. So it'd be six classrooms.
And how much can we save by not having the instrumental class in the fourth grade?
If we were to reduce that position to a halftime position, we'd save about $33,000 or so.
So...
I have a lot of trouble with those last two.
I do too.
I mean, I know classroom teachers, I hate that, but if the class size is decent and the situation we're in, this, our hands are sort of tied. But these other ones are, that's been cut and cut and cut, and it's been an integral part of our program here for years.
So just to follow up on that one, I can understand it, especially Jen, the example that you gave. We have a certain number of teachers, and we have fewer classes for those teachers. That's, we have to cut positions that way. I can even think that it's fair to the individuals as much as it is fair to the school system because they probably want their own opportunity in the classroom as well, so that's, that's fine. But as far as our specials, music, art, physical education, we had the same conversation last year, and we are not really helping our students at all by cutting the specials because this is, last year, we said the same thing. It's gonna turn into a school system that offers core classes only, and all these additional classes, specials, that allow these young students to flourish, to learn about other things, and you know these things better than we do, having taught music for so many years. I really can't fathom having no music program, no art program, no physical education in the system. I can understand that when we have the opportunity, we cut a full position. That's, you know, that's fine. You know, I'm talking about the example that you gave.
Fourth, go fourth to the fifth.
Yeah, we don't have it, we cut it. But when we go in the direction of reducing FTEs, it may mean, or it may look like a mathematical calculation to us, but that's basically reducing somebody's salary to half, less than one.
Yeah.
Let's start with that, or half in this case. And that might also mean that whether or not we intend to do that or not, that we may lose the entire program. We invested a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of sweat and tears, just like, you know, the music program that was mentioned. This is one of the great music programs in this area. We have a few students. We go to some competitions. You know, we don't have our costumes. We don't have, you know, the fanciest instruments, but at least we'll put the name of the school district somewhere. We have students who go in the classroom, do, you know, painting, ceramics, this and that, art. We don't have a lot of opportunities to play a lot of sports because we already don't have a lot of athletic opportunities. Now we're talking about actually reducing physical education, which may or may not be mandated by the state, but still, it's something that we have to give to our students. So allow me to finish for one second. So I would like to revisit the numbers related to the specials and see how we can accommodate that. I personally don't have any problem if we have to go in that direction defending any increase. I think the total is about $80,000, 46 plus 33, something like that on those two.
But, but Emery, I think it's more than that. So, because those cuts are only able to happen by moving sixth grade up. So we're not cutting the program. Those students, the only thing we're cutting is the fourth grade instrumental. So that's being cut. So the feeder program in the fourth grade's being cut. Art, music, and gym, phys ed, remains the same. It's just that we see this cutback to .7 because sixth grade is coming up to the high school. So the art programs remain the same at the elementary school level, same as music and same as phys ed. The only thing that's changing is the feeder program at the fourth grade starting a year earlier instead of fifth grade. It start, right, it would start a year later in the fifth grade. So I don't want people to think that we're, that we're cutting time out of those programs. Part of it is because we're moving sixth grade up here. So even if we were to restore the, those positions to full-time, or .9, or 9.8, or whatever they were, what do we do with that teacher? Because we don't have the kids now.
Right.
And so part of the model would have to change. So, so I think we have to, it's more than just revising those programs. It's revising whether we want sixth grade to move up here because if we say no, as a committee, we don't want sixth grade up here, then we have to backfill those positions. I think the big risk here is like what you had said, by reducing those positions, the teaching positions to .7, it might undermine the programs because the staff might leave.
Right.
And so I think that's where the risk is. I don't want anyone on the committee to think that we're reducing time for art, music, or PE because we're not at the elementary school level.
That's not what this, I don't think that's what this conversation is about. It's, we're slowly, hold on, we're slowly chipping away at, at all these programs. Little by little, we're slowly chipping away. We're slowly increasing the class sizes, we're slowly chipping away at the specials. And the slides that Dr. Hool put up, I think, are incredibly relevant, is we're not getting enough from the town to help us sustain the schools. We're cutting, 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 and we've got all the monies, all this money in the coffers, and we're not able to utilize any of it. So, so we're expected to continue to cut, 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 and send teachers home, really good teachers.
Yes.
And, and the feeder program, that really concerns me. So now, you know, well, fourth grade, sorry, you now gotta wait till fifth grade. Well, what's it gonna be next year? And then the following year? That's the problem, is you've said it yourself, every year, you're faced with this situation. When do we stop?
So I think that is the, that is the critical question that we have to ask. Otherwise, we understand this reality. We understand every year, the state's gonna cut a budget, the town's gonna have some financial concerns, and we're gonna have to have the same conversation over and over. I would rather have this conversation as part of a strategic conversation to see whether or not we want to do different things with the entire school system as opposed to reacting to what's coming our way, which then results in cutting some programs that we really don't want to cut. I think we're all feeling the same way. But you mentioned the sixth grade moving up, and then third grade moving up, and sixth grade moving here. The other concern that I have, and I would like to hear from, from all of you, whether or not you have similar concerns or you're, you're comfortable with it, we're gonna now move sixth graders to the high school building. So we're gonna have very young children, or another younger grade with seven through 12. I wonder if that is of any concern to any of you, that we're gonna have, you know, younger kids in that school, and whether we have, we thought of any, any way to separate them if necessary? And if that is the case, I'm again wondering how much it's gonna cost us to reconfigure certain spaces to be able to accommodate these sixth graders, and how much of these savings it's gonna eat into?
With regard, with regard to, we're not looking at reconfiguring space. We're looking to move classrooms around so that the sixth and seventh and eighth can be in their own separate space. Having lunch at a separate time, those are all scheduling issues that Mr. Cavalo and I have talked about, you know, so that they're not commingled with the high school kids.
But they would be on the buses, right?
That's the other thing. But I, I gotta tell you, I watch the buses go in front of my window every morning and every afternoon. They're not that full, and juniors and seniors are driving.
Going back to the, the art, music, PE, I understand the music, I guess, because there's not much music over here anyway. Like, we're, we're talking instrument music.
Right.
That's it. Horrors and everything is after school.
Right.
So music speaks for itself, but how, how are we gonna give, these sixth graders come over here, right, long or different, how are they gonna get any art or PE? They're coming here to a building without, are you, how are they gonna get it over here?
There are, there are staff here that could pick them up.
That could pick them up?
Yeah.
But if, but if they don't come over here, then would that be a cut on those areas over here? If they don't come over here?
That I'm not sure, because again, we have not played out all of the details yet. I'm gonna be very honest with you.
Well, that's the thing, I think, that is the issue that Emery referred to, that it looks okay now to get this or that, to get some reduced specials, because there's three classes not here, but is there another side to it that?
Right.
We can't see through yet.
And again, what we would need to do is play this out with more specific detail.
Yeah.
This is sort of a conceptual idea at this point. It doesn't have all of the specifics attached to it that it needs to.
Okay. So I think we need to break it down because we have a meeting next Monday night. So really, as a school committee, do we want the administrative team to consider moving third grade and sixth grade?
I would like to see the numbers either way. I think we need more detail. I think before we can decide on that, we need to see what the numbers are gonna look like if we don't do it and if we do.
Well, even if, but you have to be comfortable, as a school committee, that we are fine with moving third grade up to East Meadow and sixth grade into the junior, senior high school setting.
Because what, what you would be requesting, and I'm gonna be very frank, is a lot of work. So if you're not serious about this option, tell me now.
So that's why, that's why I want to break it down.
The reason I'm, I'm okay with that option is because I'm toward West Street, and I've seen debates, and it's not a great place right now for our kids. So I am okay with that decision. As much as, as a parent, I, I think about my sixth grader being at the high school, and it makes me nervous, but, but, but I would rather my sixth grader be, be here and, and be safe with seventh and eighth graders than my third grader be in some of the classrooms that I saw with water.
Right. And granted, they're not regular classrooms, but there are children who get serviced, or children who get tested, or meetings that take place. I mean, it's not a healthy place for staff either.
Right. No, water creates mold.
Right.
It's not healthy, and, and I've seen those rooms, so...
So that's what started this conversation, but obviously, it morphed into something else.
Right. So I need to know if the school committee's comfortable with that model being moved forward because it does, as Dr. Hool's saying, it is a lot of work to project those numbers, to move third and sixth grade.
I don't know if I'm comfortable making that decision quite yet.
My question would be, me too. No, my question would be, to narrow it down, to move third grade up and move sixth grade over. What, regardless of the pluses and minuses, what's the dollars savings?
Well, right now, what we've projected is $249,500.
$249,000.
Yeah, but, but the sixth grade teacher could be cut still and still be in East Meadow. Could?
No. No. You would have to have four sections of sixth grade at East Meadow because you've got to be students, where there are some middle school teachers who could pick up some load to help out.
Have you looked at if there are any, any positions such as administrative that are not face-to-face with students that could possibly be cut?
We have not gone down that path yet. If that's somewhere you'd like me to explore, I certainly...
Is there, is there any particular reason or reasons why?
We just, we did the, the reduction of the evaluation team leaders, so that puts some extra burden on administration and whatever with regard to picking up some meetings that they would have potentially, that would have been done by the evaluation team leaders. So that's part of, of what we go on. I'd have to look at it more carefully.
I know it's, it's a really uncomfortable thing to talk about.
Either way, it's painful.
But at the same time, it feels, I don't know, if I'm a teacher and administrators are not being, you know, put in the equation, I might be angry and resentful. And it feels like, you know, if we're gonna discuss it, we need to discuss it.
And so, but when you look at it, you know, Granby does, it's not top heavy for administration. I mean, we could go back, you could look at really one principal for two elementary schools. You could look at, you know, the high school just having a principal and not having an assistant principal. We could look at eliminating a special ed director's position and doing something else in that place.
Those are three options right there.
But, but, no, but other than that, I mean, those are, but, but there's really, there's not a lot of movement there.
But there's plenty to look though.
And even, yeah.
There's not a lot of movement anywhere.
Right. Right.
That is true.
And, you know, the other thing too, that we had some discussions on was, you brought it up yourself, the buses that are kind of less than half full. And I know that there, you know, there was some talk about some consolidating in some way, and there could be some significant savings.
Here's the rub with that. If we save money on transportation, we would have to make certain that the town in-kind contribution for that does not go away.
Yes. And we, and that was a big discussion we've had a couple of different times, and the only way to really hash that out is to make sure that everybody's in the same room.
Which is, I think, one of the reasons why we need to have everybody in the same room. Because if we were to say to the town, instead of you paying us to transport kids, pay us to educate kids, because we can, you know, if we can save money driving kids around town that we can use in the classroom to keep programs alive and to keep the quality of education that everybody at this table wants, I think that's a discussion worth having.
Yeah, because we talked about, you know, if we could reduce it to two runs instead of three.
Right.
And, but yet, that would be a financial savings to the town, but we would want that financial savings to come to the schools.
Right. So rather than being an in-kind...
Well, there's no guarantee there though.
Right.
Because transportation...
We'll have, we'll have the ground, the platform to be able to make that argument.
Right. But that would be a discussion for next week.
Right.
And part of the reason why, you know, it's never really been discussed is because we've had a difficult time getting everybody in the same room.
Well, actually, no, it's been discussed. Last year, we had savings that we actually took advantage of from transportation that was part of our, that we put into education. So we did cut a bus, but we were allowed to, I understand, to keep that money last year.
That was a big help. That was a big help.
And that was a big help. So it's not the first time it's been done. So it was done last year.
It just feels like it's been kind of a, you know, kind of a taboo.
No.
Well, we gotta be careful about how we talk about this.
Well, we do have to be careful. I mean, we have to be...
I think you have to be open and honest with the selectmen and the finances. I think you have to be open and honest with the sweatband and the finances.
Yeah, and like we were, and that's how we got the money, and that's...
Exactly.
And, you know, Chris Martin has been very helpful with us last year on that, and said, you know, that money can be used for education, and so now, we're, but if we go down from three runs to two runs, that's probably a substantial more savings, and so we'd have to work to try to get that into our regular education budget and not transportation.
And I think it's, it's, uh, it's, it's an option worth fighting for, because at least we will have a good faith gesture that we did our best to look at what opportunities are to reduce our budget, and that we're asking for educational purposes for some of those dollars.
Right, because...
Given that, you know, so many things are being cut, it might, it might not be a bad idea to do that.
Right, so, because it's not costing anymore, we're just saying, we just wanna move the money from one area to another.
Correct, correct.
So...
And that may be a big help to us.
That would be a huge help. I would think that would be a huge help.
We need to sort of know that before we can continue to deal with these terrible things in front of us.
Right. So, going back to your question, as far as moving classrooms around, when I hear how you explain it to us, the first thing that comes in my mind is, you know, students in their classrooms with water to their ankles, so probably, that's not the case.
No.
So, don't leave it to my, you know, very wild imagination here. I would like to better understand what the situation truly is. I agree, I think, with all of you, that I would not want to leave the children in a situation where they're gonna be suffering from allergies, mold, water, this and that. But I also don't have a clear picture as to what that means, whether, how dire the situation is, whether or not those rooms are used so frequently that we can't accommodate other ones. If the classrooms are there, the students have to be stepping in some water every day, then yes, I would, I would certainly consider that option.
Yeah, so I would say, uh, we would never put a student in that situation.
And that's what I know, but I just, you know what I'm saying, yeah.
Right, but I just wanna make sure that everyone knows, no students walking into the basement classrooms underwater, so...
Um, there was a leak, a leak discovered about a little over a week ago, um, we immediately moved staff and students out of the way and tucked them into books and crannies, um, to do what we...
No scuba diving, that's what we said.
And, 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 you know, if you actually went into the basement classrooms, um, over the years, the town has put much money into making them look like classrooms and, and keeping them up well. Uh, the problem is, is that it's the, my understanding, it's the water table.
Groundwater.
And, and so, it's groundwater that's coming up, because of the water table, and I know that Deb Slowcom, I mean, Deb, um, Bartlet, uh, thinking work, I'm thinking work, spent a lot of time, over the last two summers, has been cleaning that whole basement and everything else and organizing it, and so, you would probably be best to speak on those classrooms.
Oh, the tiles are papping from the water coming in, um, we've got what we consider like a small bump, which means if they crack, then that could be friable, they are asbestos tiles. Um, it's damp, it smells down there, um, I'd be concerned about mold, one of the carpets already looks like it is molding.
Has it ever been tested?
It's gotta come out.
What?
The, the, the air quality levels, I mean...
Well, this has happened within the past week, uh, we do have a carpet that needs to be ripped up, so, um, you know, we're gonna get on, kinda to get that tomorrow.
And we've had some air quality tests done in the past, I believe.
In the past, we've...
Yeah.
And?
In the past, it was fine, but that was before all this water.
Right, right.
But I worry about, even in the lounge, you know, if it gets into the wallboard, then you have mold growing.
Yeah, yeah, these are all concerns that we have, which precipitated this whole conversation about what would happen if we just stopped using the basement in that building. And then that led to the larger discussion about reductions. I will say this, um, having watched Granby in the newspapers, um, over the years, I have, what I have read in the press, has been primarily a discussion about numbers, but tonight, I hear a discussion about students. And I think that, as a district, we need to turn this discussion away from numbers and onto kids.
Yeah.
Um, this gets my dander up, to be frank. Uh, these are not, uh, cuts I would recommend on a given day to anybody. I was a music teacher. I know kids who are successful in specials and aren't successful in a whole lot of other places in schools, for whom this is a huge benefit. This pains me to have to do this. You need to know that. Um, and teachers know I'm upset. They saw, they heard it quite clearly this afternoon, I'm very upset by this, and I'm very upset that we've reduced this to balancing a budget on the backs of children. And I think it's time we turn that conversation around. There is too much good going on in our schools. And what people who are short-sighted about this need to understand is that your property values hinge on the quality of your schools. They don't hinge on the quality of your DPW, with all due respect to all the other town departments, everybody has a role to play, and I get that, but the number-one thing that drives property values is the quality of schools. And if we keep chipping away, and chipping away, and chipping away at what we offer children, basically, you're gonna send property values down, you're not gonna make this an attractive community for families. This is a great place to raise a family. If I were younger and had a family, this would be a community I would look at. But because we have a numbers view instead of a students' view, and so I'm glad to hear all of you taking that leadership role, I think it's time to turn this conversation from numbers to kids.
And we can't do that without the involvement of the other committees.
Right, so I will confirm that on Thursday night.
That's the bottom line.
Yep.
And we have the, we have the largest budget in this town, and we have the most influence in the town, just, just because of what you said, right? I mean, people come to our community for the school systems, people are moving in with young children because they want to follow the schools.
And at the same time, we can't continue to do that, because we're gonna lose the people who are leaving the schools.
Right.
And we know that's, that's a real pillar, it's just a personal pillar to me.
So, I just wanna interrupt the conversation for one second. Uh, we are over with visitors' comments, but I think we'd be very happy to have you sign in and give us your comment, if you don't mind. Emma Hostchild, thank you. And so, what comments do you have for us tonight?
Okay, so, I was really nervous this time, that's why I didn't sign up before, but...
We're very happy to have you here, we truly are.
And so, I wanted to come here because I wanted to see what was going on with all the budgets and stuff, and since it looks like I'm the only student that's here, I thought my opinion would be valid.
Absolutely.
And so, everything that was on the thing affects the students, no matter if it's a cut or eliminating teachers. Well, teachers to students, that's okay, because you can't have too many kids to a teacher, but, like, cutting off, um, education, like, the physical edge, the specials and stuff like that, it'll affect us. And moving the sixth graders to the high school, and you guys say it, they won't interact with the high schoolers, but they will interact, because the seventh and eighth graders already interact with each other. Like, most of the ninth graders know tons of the kids, and all the other ones know them. Like, after school or before school, they will interact. So, so if you're worried about the sixth graders, they will talk to them. And so, it's just, everything that happens, it will affect the students, even though you don't think they will, they will. And I think that they should, these committees should have more input from students, because it looks like you guys are kind of struggling from not having input from kids. So, I think you guys should try to be more, like, open about these meetings and try to get more students' inputs, because you guys have been doing this for a while, and I think some students would have some good ideas, because I talk with my friends sometimes, and they have really good ideas, too. And so, and then a lot of kids also that don't like doing this stuff, they honestly, they say they almost dislike the school very much because of the, the way it's being run with the mold and everything, so they just don't like the school. And if the students don't like the school, then they're not gonna wanna learn, they're just gonna be like, oh, well, I'm here to learn, but I'm just gonna pass my classes, so, yeah.
Do you have any ideas on how we could get more students', um, input? I would love to hear from more of you guys.
Honestly, I'm not sure, like, I'm not sure what really made me come here, I just, I just thought it was so interesting. I looked it up online before I came, too, so it's just like, I gotta know this stuff, but, I, I'm not really sure how to get kids, because I don't know other kids like me too much, that will be like, oh, I wanna go to council meeting, I wanna help, like, they just seem like they want adults to fix it, but they're not gonna be able to fix it, and they don't know what the students are wanting. So, I'm not personally sure right this second, but I'm sure if I talk to more kids, they would have more ideas, or I could get them to be more involved with this.
What grade are you in?
I'm in ninth grade here.
Is there some way that maybe you could spearhead some of that, and we could get some of those suggestions?
Well, I, I, um, signed up for student council, so we'll be through that, I could get some of those kids, and then they could get more kids, and they could bunch kids.
Here's what I will offer to you, and to the student council, I'll come have lunch with you someday, between now and Monday, next Monday, so you can tell me what you think and what your ideas are, and I'll bring them back. If you're willing to meet with me, I'm willing to meet with you.
I'm not sure if I've gotten to student council yet, but...
Alex, who can't pay me, tell us.
And I, I think the superintendent is willing to sit with you, even if you don't get on students.
Absolutely. If you think there's a group of students, I'll talk to Mr. Cavalo, and we'll see what we can work out.
Okay.
At some time between now and next Monday, I'd love to hear from you guys.
So, Emma, thank you very, very much for being so brave and proactive, and coming here and standing up and talking in front of all of us. Uh, we definitely appreciate it, and we are definitely open to your ideas, and any way you can get more students to come to, uh, a school committee meeting, that would be great, but, uh, thank you, thank you very, very much.
Mom, is it okay if I add a little, if I sign in? I know there's...
Yes, you can, you can. Yes, please, please do, please do. So, Emma's mom, Jennifer Hostchild.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hostchild, Emma's mom, and, um, she came to me today with this, she said, can we please go to the budget meeting, because Ms. Dupre told me all about it, and they're cutting teachers, and she was out. I just wanted to give you a little background, we're new to this, uh, district this year, we are school of choice, and we chose this school because, I went to the school when, um, I was a kid. We actually live in Chickaby, but we chose it, and I have a daughter also at, um, East Meadow School in the fourth grade, and we chose it because it's, it's a small community, um, and we love the interaction, the teachers are awesome, a lot of Emma's classes are, um, I'm in a master's program right now, they're like, right on one-on-one, we talk about the same things with the online programs that Ms. Dupre was starting, and, um, it's just, academically, they're like equal to so many of the surrounding communities. Chickaby had a lot more to offer my kids as far as specials, as far as, um, technology, but we chose to come here, and I see her excelling, and I see my other daughter just flourishing with the music, and she's in the course, and she's taking advantage of all those opportunities that, um, are here, so it would just be so painful to see all that taken away, and I'm glad that she mentioned about focusing on the kids and the education and the specials and, because it is about the kids, and, um, it would be great to, um, for other communities to recognize how special Granby is, and I don't know much about what school of choice brings to the community, if it does bring income in, or if it just kinda washes out one another, but, um, showing other communities how welcoming, how great it is, um, inviting other people to see what Granby can offer, I think would be a wonderful thing, and if we just continue to cut, um, I think there's nothing left, you know? And I don't know what, what it is as far as, like, when are, when are kids leaving? You say they come in at kindergarten and they stay throughout, you know, school and choice, but then also, I heard, like, when we came for the interview with the principal, he says, what's making you come here? Um, almost like, what do you see in us that you don't see over in Chickaby in the public schools? And we see a small-knit community, great teachers, great academics, and that's what we want, because we know that's what their future is. So, if we, um, focus on maybe getting other communities to see what Granby has, getting our music programs out there, getting our art programs out there, and seeing that it is a wonderful community and a school and things, so, I don't know, that's... And, and she's so new to the school, but yet, she's willing to fight for it, so...
And we appreciate it, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, as a school committee, what do you wanna do for our next step? So, still on the table, do you want Dr. Hool and the administration to go down the road of, um, reconfiguration? I know, we heard that it's gonna be a lot of work, uh, so we have to show, you know, if we really want that done, we have to make sure that we let Dr. Hool know that we, we do wanna continue down that reconfiguration path as, as an option. We also threw out a few other options around administration, um, so, as a school committee, any other discussion for tonight on this? Do we wanna wait till, um, we're with the other committees next Monday? The other thing was the transportation savings, so, uh, one thing, Dr. Hool, on that, you know, the biggest bang for the buck that I can visually see right now would be to go down to two runs, and not just eliminate one bus, it would be eliminate a complete run, and, you know, so that would probably mean, that would affect, um, kids on the bus time, maybe, uh, and the drop-offs would be, you know, combine West Street and East Meadow, and then you'd still have your junior, senior run.
Right.
So...
And if you were to combine the elementary runs, it really wouldn't be a time difference in terms of riding on the bus, it would just be coming to an agreement with the association around start and end times.
Right.
Um, so, and, you know, and I think there could be a benefit there, educationally speaking, for teachers, um, to be able to allow more vertical conversations between the grade levels. Right now, you know, you have to kinda figure out how you can get some teachers released so they can go to, you know, from West Street can come up to East Meadow or whatever else, it's very little time that teachers can engage with one another at the elementary level, just because of the scheduling issue. That would certainly help strengthen professional development for our educators, and it would be a plus.
It'd be easier to schedule the specials' schedules, too.
Yes, yes, it would.
So, um...
The two that we have, at the present time.
I would still have them where they are.
I know, but we need to warn.
So, anyway, the realignment or reconfiguration, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, roughly. Do we want that on the table, because it is a lot of work for the administration and Dr. Hool to continue down that path? So, if, as a committee, we're not interested in that at all, because we have reservations of bringing sixth grade up here, or third grade to East Meadow, I, I would prefer, uh, the administration and Dr. Hool to look elsewhere, so I, I know I'm putting the committee in a tough situation, but, but we really do need, we really do need to set some direction, so if we're...
I would keep it on the table primarily because of health concerns. Otherwise, I would, I would really appreciate if we could better understand what, what the basement situation really means.
Right. Well, it's a groundwater... Well, it's a groundwater issue, and I will tell you, I was down there today. Um, I was down there last week as well. Some tiles had popped in one of the floors. They have been replaced. They came up intact, so there was no asbestos to become friable, so that was a good thing. But there is, in several of the classrooms, a little ripple, so you can tell that more tiles could potentially come up. If they do, and they are friable, we're in a very different place.
Okay. So, I forget whether it was Emory or Deanne, you asked about air quality. Could you ask if the fire department could come in and do an air quality test?
So, let me, let me ask this to better understand. If tomorrow you had to close the basement, would that mean that third grades don't have rooms available to them?
No. These are, these are classrooms that are...
Which grade is special ed? These are...
Special ed, English, language learners, um, also people who do testing of students, work with students down in that space. So, obviously, we'd have to scramble. If you weren't to move third grade, we could probably make it work with the reduction of the kindergarten and second grade classroom, but you would incur some cost in putting up some sort of partitions in those classrooms to make them into smaller spaces. So that would take some of the savings off the table. There would be a cost associated with that.
So, I hate to even suggest this, but, uh, because it's not the best space. Uh, but the stage at West Street had been used in the past for...
But you can't have, like, four different activities going on at the same time.
No, you have, you have to have those dividers and everything else, but, you know, is that space being used today at all?
Well, it's used for libraries sometimes, and some people are going for small groups. But for the most part, Lori Jewett is in there also, so it would only be available certain days. But she's in there for library and computers.
So, the moment we make the decision to move the students out of the basement, or to close the classrooms and call it unavailable, to me, that's, that's a permanent decision. Right? Just, we basically made the decision, uh, not to use that space for whatever reason, health, safety, this and that. We have, in a, uh, putting my optimistic hat on, we have till 2017, until the new school, if everything goes well, uh, article passes and all that. We have till the school year that begins in fall 2017. So that basically creates a three-year span almost, for which we have to do something with the students here. Um, uh, so it's not really temporary for this year, we're talking about, we're talking about temporary for the next few years.
Yeah.
Um, I'm wondering whether or not that space constraint will also cause some additional issues as far as programming and doing, uh, being able to do some other things. Or, as I'm trying to understand, we are concerned, yes, but if we do not have that space, we can still operate a full elementary school at West Street? And let's just hold off on that and see what happens, uh, in the near future?
We'd have to figure out what it would take to divide up some classrooms.
Right.
Expense-wise, 'cause you will incur expenses if we take full classrooms and split them to accommodate. That will be a cost. That will wind up coming off that $249,000.
That's why I asked, that's why I said it's hard to make a decision without, I know it's a lot of work, I do, and I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I just, if you're, if you're serious about considering it, I don't mind doing it.
It's just that I think we, you know, I'm, what I'm hearing is what I was feeling. I, it's hard for me to sit, go ahead and say yes to that without seeing those numbers.
Right, right, right. No, and if, I mean, if you're serious in pursuing it, you may take it off the table when all is said and done, and that's fine. But, you know, obviously, if, if out of the gate you were like, "No," then that's, that's a different...
Are there three classrooms here presently for September? If sixth grade did come over here, are there three classrooms that are, what kind of impact is that gonna have on other teachers, other programs, other, what, the superintendent's office where you are? What, is that gonna, are those classrooms needed for these sixth grade kids?
Um, I can't answer that fully for you. We've taken, John and I took a preliminary look today at some of the various options. Obviously, we'll explore those in more detail. It might mean part of central office might wind up at West Street if we did the whole thing. Um, you know, I don't know at this point, to be honest with you.
That's what I could...
'Cause we have to play it all out, yeah.
And one, one last request, since, you know, we had so many, I'm just gonna add one more. Uh, if we could, um, get some picture as to what would happen to the students if we don't have, uh, the basement available, so we're doing everything upstairs, we have to put partitions, even if the cost is, you know, palatable. Uh, if we can find out what the impact is on the education, on students, if they're gonna be crammed like this in one space, or if they're gonna have enough room to operate the way they normally do, that would be great to find out.
Well, it's mostly small group issues, so, I mean, working in small groups could divide a classroom. We just have to understand that that's a cost that will come off of the total savings.
So what's the largest group right now in the basement at West Street?
Deb?
Eight?
At one time.
At one time, there's, and that's one, that's one group of eight?
Of eight.
The only, the only students down there currently is the ELL, are the ELL students.
Okay.
And just a, a small point, um, that has a time limit on it as well. This year, remember, we had the discussion about needing to move a special education program from the basement to the upstairs, because we were cited by the department with respect to the concentration. And, and the Department of Education and their analysis of our space took issue with the fact that all the kids that went downstairs were kids with special needs. And they, they sort of put Deb on call. They said, "Okay, you took care of the special ed problem there. Next, you were coming back for the ELL." So, it's a small, it's a small number of students that are currently being served. There's a conference room and another office down there. And, but the ELL teacher, when she is at West Street, has a, a small instructional space there. And so from a, as Judy's right, from a square footage point of view, we have more than enough room to, to bring people up. It's just a matter of, you know, finding the partitioning for that.
Yeah. So, so right now, at, at any one time in the basement of West Street, how many educational classes are going on?
One class, and that's when we meet students.
Okay. And so, next year...
But the other thing is going on is the evaluation team leader works down there.
Right.
There are students who are going through the special ed process, who are being tested down there.
Right, evaluation.
So, I mean, there are team meetings that are being held down there, so it's, it's not just ELL that's going on. There are a variety of other activities happening.
So, to me, that's, so to me, some of that stuff is scheduling.
Right.
But, so next year, we're saying we're cutting back on a kindergarten. And so would that automatically free up a classroom?
It would.
So, that program...
And the same thing, the second grade classroom. We'd have to divide the classrooms up to make it work.
Okay. So, we'd have a kindergarten classroom today for that group of eight students. And then, we'd have to have an evaluation space.
Uh, conference space for team meetings, 'cause you can't hold that on the stage in the library, 'cause that's a pretty highly confidential activity. Um, so you'd have to have a place for testing, which has to be pretty quiet and contained. So, I mean, it could be done. I'm, I'm not gonna argue with you. It could be done, but it would be also a cost incurred and a reduction in savings if we had to leave the specials as they are. So that $249,000 number would diminish, and the total proposed reductions, if we're gonna stay up in that $440,000 range, it has to come from somewhere else.
Okay. So I think, uh, the committee's still, I, I think they want you to continue down the path of the realignment to get a better understanding.
Okay.
Um, and then I guess everything else is still on the table, but also, uh, those other options of, uh, to run for buses and then administrative. And, and also, you know, we say administrative, it should also be, you know, any staff in central office. And, uh, probably, um, any secretary too. You know, across the district.
Okay. We will investigate it.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll get those, you'll run that by us next Monday with our, okay, we'll have that discussion. So anything else for tonight on the budget?
No. Thank you for the...
Anybody wanna jump in? Big sale?
We'll do it.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for all coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. And thank you for everyone who spoke. Uh, we, we truly appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna jump back to the, uh, the policy, and that's the Wi-Fi language, and it's in the pamphlet?
(inaudible). Okay. You have anything else to say? That's not, you're supposed to speak, so I'm sorry. I forgot that.
Oh, yeah, I, oh.
She's looking for my...
Budget? Yes. I feel bad.
No, why? I, I thought that was, I thought it was perfect.
I did too.
I, I thought it was perfect.
Yeah, but that's our policy when it comes to visitors. We all agree to it.
Okay. I'll, I'll bring one of those hordes, airhorns. I'm gonna bring an airhorn next time.
That'll snap me right on.
What did you say?
There you go.
Okay. So, we have the Wi-Fi language, uh, before us. This is the second reading.
Yes.
And it was all highlighted last time in, uh, in yellow. It still is, um, unless you printed it on a black and white printer. But, um, so I would like a motion to approve this policy, since this is the second reading, and I'd like it second, and then open it up for discussion.
Thank you.
So actually, we had a conversation on this, and I don't have my notes in front of me, that we had some changes requested. Are those changes made, or some, we had some comments, notes?
There were, no, there were no changes requested. There were some, there were some questions that were answered.
Okay.
I think one question you had, Emory, was, um, when the, the comment about...
One of them was about the teachers actually having a discretion...
Correct. You wanted to make sure that that did not supersede other parts.
Yes.
And, and we, and the answer that we provided was that that basically was to, um, give the teacher or the school administrator, empower them to make additional, um, requirements if necessary. For example, there might be some, there might be something that is a...
Sorry, I just didn't...
Oh, sorry.
If you have any critical questions...
(laughter) Put a cap on later, sorry.
The, the, the intent of that was that, uh, there might be, uh, a particular use that is very appropriate in certain, uh, content areas and certain classes, but not others. So it would, it would allow certain teachers that feel it's, that some type of use is not appropriate, they could say, "We're not gonna use this in my classroom. We're not gonna use this particular application in my classroom."
Yep.
That was the intent, was to...
Okay. So I think my question was whether or not that was clear, that we have a policy which creates a framework, but for personal classroom use, the teacher was still gonna have some, uh, uh, freedom to say, "No, not in this classroom." For whatever reason. I mean, I, I don't want, I don't want, uh, a camera in the room, I don't want this in the room, I really don't want people to be distracted in my room. Is that clear in it? I think that was my question, and I did not think that it was as clear. But if the consensus is that it is, then, then I'm good. I think overall, we were good with the, uh, with the policy.
So I'm a little confused, uh, Emory, what you're asking. Are you saying that, um...
There was a section that I, actually, I can see that.
And Emory, it's probably a section that's highlighted quite a bit, um...
Section E, I think.
E, where it goes into the use, and there are several bullet points underneath there. And so, the question that I have, I thought about this. So, do we allow, at one point, we did. And, but do we allow today, teachers and staff to collect cell phones when students enter the classroom? Because I'm just wondering, is that a, a safety issue today by collecting students' cell phones, if they were ever needed?
I would have to defer to Mr. Cavalo with regard to the code of conduct.
Sure. I'd like to answer one for you. I'd only encourage to practice, to be honest with you. I, I think it's kind of a slippery slope. We've talked about it at the school. Uh, I think any time you, um, you know, you sort of engage in something like that, you open up the door for, um, displacement of phones, uh, phones getting, putting in the hands of the wrong people, you know, teachers intervening. Um, we, we don't have any kind of blanket policy where we collect phones and we, uh, you know, there, our, our policy is very clear. Basically, out of, out of sight, um, they're not to be visible unless the teacher is authorizing that in the classroom. Now, if that's the case, then it's free game. You know, when they say it's free game, it's basically, they can use it to pick notes to do schoolwork, but if a teacher has a blanket rule, it says no visible cellphone use, you know, or phones in the classroom, throw away.
So, should we, under section E of this policy, put in a section that, uh, students' phones will not be collected per classroom or something like that? I, I just think of today, in today's society, um, and, you know, this has evolved quite a bit, Jonathan, because at one point, we did recommend that cell phones get taken, um, that they don't get taken and collected at, you know, the start of class. So, should we be doing something like that?
I would say that that's more procedural than it is policy.
Yeah.
Because E, item number two, says that the use of personal electronic devices must abide, all use of them must abide by all directives and restrictions, um, issued by teachers and administrators. But I think as a matter of procedure, if Mr. Cavalo feels that with his staff, that this is not something that he wishes to see happen at the high school, he can certainly do that through an employee directive.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, then. I'm fine?
I think too, I think there's gonna be, um, as time goes on, and if the PARC test becomes, uh, something that we go back into, I think that, I, I might be wrong, Dr. Hool, but I think that, wasn't that one of the requirements in PARC that student, you couldn't, students could not have personal devices when they were taking the test? I, I know that they were collected here, be, when students walked into the testing...
Well, it's true with MCAS, too.
Yeah.
You know, they're not allowed to have, um, you know, cellphone devices anywhere within view. It has to be in a backpack or something else, 'cause there have been kids who have been known to text through a pants pocket, believe it or not, you know, um...
Okay. Can I have a motion on table for this in a second, and we can continue discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, school Wi-Fi policy.
In a second.
Okay. Discussion, I, any other discussion? I know, uh, Emory, did your questions get answered?
I think they did, and I'm actually looking at a section, either my recollection is wrong, or there is actually a couple of words that were, that seemed to be added, and just that's, that's, that's fine.
I, if I can make one comment, that this is, this is new territory for a lot of schools. Um, and I would be, it would not surprise me if over the next six months, 12 months, two years, we get advisories, either from the Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education, or from Superintendent's Association or your association, to, you know, add this or change this or whatever. So, this is, this is a place for us to start, you know, and we may have, we may wanna discuss something in a year or so again, based on...
Actually, what, what I had commented on, which I read afterwards, was a section where the sentence was saying that not complying, and I'm just, uh, paraphrasing, um, not complying with these may result in, uh, the loss of the device or something like that. And my suggestion was, can we just specify it as an access privilege as opposed to...
It was number 12. It's under number 12.
And it is, it is. So that's why I'm wondering whether a change was made, and I think there was a section, and I'm comfortable with it.
What's the biggest issue that this change is gonna correct here for the people who have to enforce this? It's tough that we, we approved the policy, but we don't have any of the enforcing, we don't do any of that. So how, what's the biggest thing you're trying to correct here? You're, you're getting ahead of the game here.
We wanna be ahead of the game before we, we officially tell students that you can bring devices in from home, and you can use school... bring devices in from home and you can use school resources. That would be the school's wireless network access points, the school's bandwidth, which is going to be a big piece for access. And we want to, and like, whenever you open up a network, there's the potential that there's going to be draw on the network. Just like if you let people plug into your electricity, there's going to be people using it. And it's not going to necessarily be an expense, per se. But if students are using this for activities other than educational activities that slow the network down, we, the administration, the teachers, need something to say, "Hey, you can't do that. This was here to assist you with learning, for note-taking, for classroom activities. And this allows us to place reasonable restrictions and guidelines."
Like, look at number 11. It must be, anything in yellow is a new add-on, right? Am I correct?
No, no. Well, that whole section was added on. The yellow was, the yellow was sections that our legal counsel asked us to adjust. And the yellow has, the yellow sections already had the adjustments based on the legal counsel's recommendations. Number 11, for example...
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Was a little lengthier, and the legal counsel recommended, we shortened it. And that's what you see is what was recommended.
So a lot of it had to, a lot of the changes is the wording or phrase, "personal electronic devices." That seems to be highlighted everywhere. So whatever you had there before, they probably changed that.
Number 11 was more, had some specific examples, and they recommended that we just simplify it.
So one thing that we do need is, you know, we definitely need the date updated. So whenever we vote on this, and it does get a new date stamped...
And let me just say that this policy, having seen similar ones in other districts, is compliant with the Children's Internet Protection and Safety Act, which we have to comply with as a school district. There's a federal statute that requires us to protect children from all sorts of things that are out on the internet that the founders of the internet probably never imagined that the internet would become. We can do that on our own network and with our own equipment through the use of a firewall pretty easily. But when kids start bringing their own personal devices in, and even with a firewall, the best of firewalls, you can go someplace that you shouldn't necessarily go to. So it's our policy to make sure that we are abiding by the law and providing safeguards for children. But on the other hand, the law also recognizes that there's some responsibility to be borne by parents and students alike with regard to the use of either devices on our own network that are school devices, or any personal devices that they bring in. So this really helps us comply with that law.
So does anyone have any other questions or comments on that? If not, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, second reading of the Wi-Fi policy. Anonymous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we skipped around a little bit. So I'm trying to catch up here. And I think we talked about the budget.
FY '15?
But not '15. Okay, so the monthly budget report.
To just excuse my voice as I go through this. As of March 31st, we look to be pretty much on track, the FY '15 budget. As you know, we have been projecting a deficit of upwards of $100,000 for the last several months. But due to the town special, town meeting vote, voting us an additional $85,000 appropriation, combined with electricity costs that we thought were going up are now trending downwards, we're right on track presently. We're not projecting any deficit at this point in time. The one concern, which we've mentioned in the past, and we're still looking at is the substitute expense line item. Last month, we were projecting it to be $8,000 over budget. Now we're projecting it to be approximately $10,500 over budget. That's a trend that's not good. So all we can do is watch it. But overall, as I said, we're on track right now. The one last thing, there were some discussions with the town administrator. We did spend some money cleaning off the roofs here of snow and ice. And I believe that was a figure of around $6,000.
It was actually $9,000 and change.
$9,000, okay. So that's an ongoing discussion. We may be able to get some of that back.
Substitute counts, are you doing professional development during the day and bringing subs in? Why is that continuing to go up?
It's primarily...
People's personal days, or what's going on?
If I can just speak to a little bit, Jim, at least for junior senior high school, that we've just been really inundated with NEASC. And, you know, any type of professional development opportunities, as in the past, you know, allow for release time for teachers, at least to, you know, get going a couple hours or the day. We've had audits, you know, with our AP, you know, AP teachers have been inundated with cleaner audit, which was a lot of work. So we've had teachers who need to work on curriculum, same time meeting our NEASC obligations. So it's been an unusual year. I would take the junior senior high school to that.
And I would say, based on the email that, I don't know, I have received, but from Anne Marie Sapowski, it seems that, you know, subs, it's going to be even kicking up towards the end of the year.
That's not good. It'll get worse.
I know. But I'm just saying, that's what, based on her email, it sounds that way, that, because she really wants to make sure that she does have enough subs to cover. Any other questions? If not, I'm going to...
Just to make sure, the recent special town meeting appropriation, the $85,000 that is mentioned here, that is not covering the substitute gap that you're talking here? Or is it at least partially covering it?
No, it wasn't for that.
It wasn't, but just, you know, if your electricity cost isn't what you expected, I'm wondering whether there was any way to move things around.
Yeah, well, if you call Aspen, we're still projecting a deficit. I think of $8,000 or $9,000 for the year. And right now, we're not projecting any deficit. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Archie on the budget? Okay, so I will go on to the written reports. Annabelle's not with us tonight. She had a conflict. So I will just go through the principles. So any questions for Jonathan Cavalo on his report? Anything you want to highlight, Jonathan?
You know, other than under learning results, goal one, I'm really excited to see that we have 90 students who have signed up to take the AP exam.
Act four.
You know, I'm really excited about, you know, looking to see results come summertime on how our students fare. I continue to have discussions with my AP teachers around, you know, how they're doing, how the kid's progressing, and so forth. So it's pretty exciting, like I said, you know, in terms of our new AP classes. Senior AP course classes, I'm working on, you know, we have a class of about 17 students and only three. And historically, as we know, we've had a drop-off between grade 11 and grade 12 for a number of reasons, college not taking six credits, you know, versus three and whatnot. So looking to maybe create some policy around students who take the AP course and what kind of incentive or consequence they could put in place. And I have some data that I collected from other schools in terms of what they do in that area. So trying to, you know, shore up our AP program. Our course selection sheets, I think I mentioned that, they went out, they were due last Friday. So we're in the process of getting all those tallies to see exactly what's going to run for the next school year. And then lastly, just the last one around the community connections and communications that Menho Cook was referencing, the last Saturday in March, it was a great event here at the school. And we had our day with the Japanese students, 34 of them came on campus, was really a great experience for our student body. Put that together within a week or two. And we had elections, student council elections and class office elections last Thursday. So we tried something new. We actually, individuals who ran for office actually gave speeches to their classmates in cafeteria. That was something that was suggested that we went with. And, you know, I know it come up with Emma in terms of how we can get greater student input. And I, you know, talked to Dr. Who, I think it was even before she took over, that with the student advisory council, you know, there is a lot of books that really allows for the school committee to meet with a group of students from the high school, you know, once a month. In fact, that's where the student council representative, where Annabelle comes in. She's supposedly that individual who's chosen by this body to have a non-binding vote on the committee, that if you would like to, you know, have that opportunity next school year to meet periodically with a group of students, to, you know, to get a pulse on what's happening in the school, I'd be more than happy to organize that for you, you know, with Dr. Who.
That sounds wonderful.
I think that's a great idea.
And have maybe talk in different topics and...
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea.
John, just a question, and I'll ask each of them. I know I've seen notes where the school councils are talking about these maintenance plans with the school council. So what kind of things are you planning?
Sure, absolutely.
Do we need to put money in the maintenance account?
Well, you know, it's a great question, because I have a PO...
I need to know what's going on.
I have a PO sitting on my desk, Jim, that one of the big... Our classroom, for example, in the, in September and late spring, you know, the last couple months of school year, the temperatures get close to about 90 degrees. So we have, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. So as part of the plan, we're looking to put an AC unit in the art room to really, because kids have passed out, it's been really awful conditions in the art room. So that's something that we have in that plan that through our student activities account, we hopefully get earmarked some money to put the AC in. Carpeting, you know, there are a couple of classrooms upstairs, 214, we have a huge crack that runs, that's running through the middle of the room. That's part of the maintenance plan over the summer, that maybe we can look at putting a carpet in there. In my plan, I talked about, I took three contractors around the school to look at six bathrooms. That's part of the plan, with, you know, hopefully through support at town meeting, that we'll get money to refurbish the bathrooms.
What is that, what is that amount of money that's on the warrant?
I don't know what the mon...
It's about 50-ish. I thought it was 60, but I think it's about $60,000.
Based on the two quotes I have, it won't be six bathrooms.
It's all right.
It'll be less.
But that capital approval, approve some figure, right?
That's my, I'm hearing it now.
And we don't know what that is yet?
I went to that meeting and was asked that, based on the quotes that we received, to go back to the committee and give them a...
An updated?
Give them, we talked about that, I think it was our last meeting or two weeks ago, give them a firm number that we'd be looking at.
So it probably hasn't been finalized yet, then?
That's right.
According to the town administrator, the period for getting capital projects through the capital planning committee is passed.
No, they did approve it. They already approved it. They just wanted an updated number.
Oh, want an updated number?
So that's it. So they wanted, they felt the same, that whatever the number was, like 45,000 or whatever it was, they felt that it was way too low and that it should be an updated number. So Jonathan, is somebody working on that, do you know? Or is that...
Yes. I have two quotes.
All right, just a brief thing.
So all that's part of it.
And it is for all the bathrooms? So whatever the quote is, it's for all the bathrooms?
It's for all six bathrooms, yeah. And now, the quotes are a little, all over the map. So I think we just have to, there were three quotes that were solicited. One contractor chose not to quote after asked. So I do have two quotes in hand, but they're very different looking. So I think we need to settle on what are the actual specs that we're looking at and see if we can compare apples to apples.
I would love to say that we could include locker rooms as, that whole shower area and all that stuff as our bathrooms, too. But probably not.
Just one last thing, I just want to really commend the work of the fields committee. This past weekend, they were out back working, if you, you know, have some time, to take a look at the playing fields. They put a whole run fence out there. Gary Toth had a couple of trucks out there this afternoon, painted the pavilion, painted dugouts. We have a black hole going up, just a lot, a lot of nice things happening in back of the fields.
Wind screens.
Wind screens, yep, and five fields. Just a lot of nice things that are being done by parent volunteers who are really playing a lot of time and effort to improve the playing fields out back. So I want to commend them for that.
So when it's 90 degrees out there, we can maybe meet there? Just a quick note on the, you brought up the AP and how many students are taking it. And I agree that it's, it doesn't, it looks a little odd that there are so many students in Lit who sign up and not only a few of them end up taking the class. But if there is a way for us to find an incentive as opposed to consequence, so that we don't lose, you know, the difference, which is about 14 students or so, for instance, this year, it would be great. I really like the fact that they are willing to take these AP classes. Now it's for us to find out, I guess, for you guys to find out, why they're not, why they're choosing. It could be the cost of the exam, it could be something else. And we know that it's been a deterrent for some of the students. So let's find out, maybe we can find a good incentive for them to, for all of them to take the exam.
And we have 100% attendance in calc, in biology, in stats, so in history, you know, the 8th, 11th grade. So really, kids are taking the exam, they're signing up for the course and they're taking the exam. And we want to sort of encourage that. We want the exam to be part of the course.
Right.
Because it is.
Yep.
And so teachers are also doing little incentives in the classroom to encourage it. Like instead of giving a end-of-the-year exam, their exam would be the, you know, the exam that they're given in the class, the college boards and ministry.
Thank you, Jonathan. Moving on to this matter. Any have any questions for Jennifer? And do you have any highlights?
Yeah, under professional development, I really wanted to highlight that last Friday, was April 3rd, was our half-day curriculum day. And when I wrote this and submitted it, I wasn't quite sure kind of how it was going to go. I was really excited about it because it was kind of the first time we'd done this. It came out of a request from the teachers at the elementary level. It just, basically, there's been a lot of initiatives. We have, you know, new ELA curriculum, we have new math curriculum, new programs to go along with that. There's been a lot of DI professional development. And so they just wanted time to collaborate with each other and to like dig deeper into some of these things and to really work together on some of these initiatives. And so we put out a survey at both of the elementary schools. And basically, they could choose of several different options, based on the feedback that I had gotten initially. They could choose some different options, all in alignment with our school improvement plans and district improvement plan. And they were able to choose something that would work for them. And this, one of the things that they were talking to me about prior to this day was they really wanted it differentiated. Like we work on differentiated instruction for the kids, but they wanted professional development and to be able to work on the curriculum in a way that was differentiated. So they were able to choose, and they presented to each of the principals a plan for that day. And in walking around, I got some really wonderful feedback from the teachers. They really appreciated that time. A teacher even said, like, it was the best use of time that she's had in a while. Because they were really just able to, they, you know, I had a group of teachers working on ELA, and all three grades met together. And they were able to troubleshoot, they were able to talk about how they're using the program, and different ideas came out. "Oh, I did this." "Oh, I didn't try that yet. How did that go?" And they were just, the sharing of ideas was phenomenal. I had a couple other teachers working on differentiating their study guides to have a more scaffolded, to meet the needs of different kids in their classrooms. So just, it was really wonderful. And we actually shared some of that out today at our staff meeting. So it was just a really productive day, that I feel like the teachers got a lot out of it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jim, did you have, did you want me to talk about the maintenance?
Yeah, what you're doing there?
Yeah.
What you hope to do there?
So some, I actually, you know, when I put it together, it was hard, because like Ken was out and, and, you know, I talked to the custodians and things, and we had a consultant. But it was really interesting, because a lot of stuff that was initially on there for, because I even had stuff that I wanted done by September of this year. And the custodians really pulled together over February break, and we've already... And we've already done some of the things. Some of the smaller things were like the cove-based molding, like the lac molding around the edges in the cafeteria. Half of it was like peeled back and we just didn't have it to be able to put it up. So they're not high-cost items, but we were able to get some of that, get the glue. They were able to scrape off the old and put up new ones. Painting of certain areas. There was a wall in the gymnasium that had old, like from putting up posters and the tape residue that was left. It just looked bad. And I'm like, this is a place, not in the gymnasium, I'm sorry, the cafeteria. And I was like, this is a place where a lot of parents come in when they're coming through the school and it's just, it's a highly visible area. And so that area was painted. Similar area like that was painted in the office. We're also looking at, you know, things that might cost a little bit more, but the partitions in the bathroom, and that's not for this school year, but looking at next school year, the partitions in the bathroom, looking at, some of them are rusting. And then there are some bigger items that I did put in-
Well, they've only been there fifty years.
I don't know why they're rusting. And then there are, there are some bigger items on there that I knew would be like a capital item that I put in there because it's a three-year plan for the future, things to look at. For instance, like our gym floor. It's almost become a hazardous area where there's tiles up and kids slip because tiles missing and things like that. So depending on what happens with the building project, we might not need that. But I have to, I had to put it in a plan because, you know, I can't plan that there's definitely going to be East Meadow part of that building project. So I put it in there as a future item. But we started to address some of those things.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to West Street. Deb.
Any questions?
Any questions or anything you want to highlight?
Yes, our Chinese acrobats, they were fabulous. If you want to catch it, we have a whole show on GCM, so you can watch that anytime you like.
Excellent.
They were fabulous. The kids were just so enthused. We had two shows for the price of one. I got a great deal. I was supposed to have them earlier in the year and when they told me the price, I said, thank you, but no, thank you. And they were booked in Chicopee for an afternoon and they said, well, we'll do a show for you in the morning. I said, if you do two, I'll pay for it. So PTO was kind enough to pay for it. That was their assembly money for West Street. They were wonderful. And the kids were just, they were amazed. And it was wonderful. It's culturally something you don't see very often in Granby. So it was great. We're still working on a challenge. If you have any ideas, the kids have to read at West Street School fifteen hundred books. It's going to be hard to top last year. They haven't, I had to kiss the pig last year. They haven't come up with anything yet, but they said they're thinking about it. So I don't know what it's going to be. I know they'll make the fifteen hundred though. So in June, something exciting will happen.
A dunk.
A dunk.
Boogaloo cross.
Somebody said keep all the girls really hot.
I've been slimed. I've been slimed. I've been slimed.
They would love that.
I think it's going to be tough to top.
It's a TV show where some green guru or something like that.
That's the slime.
That's right.
Like Nickelodeon. I don't know what they want. I've been slimed in my day, twice.
Twice?
See, there you go. You got the answer.
Wear goggles. That's all I can tell you.
The other commenter, do we have any questions?
I think, we think the chair of the school committee should be slimed. Yeah, yeah.
You mean I'm not every month?
If you do it, I'll do it. How's that?
I would do it.
All right. You're on. Game on.
Raise funds or something, I'll do it.
I would do that, I'd say that.
Matter of fact, I think my daughter was pied today with her preschool.
I've been pied, slaved, strayed and slimed, twice on all fours.
So some time racing, so. I just ask for pictures to be taken.
Mike, I'm sorry, can I add one other thing?
Of course.
I wanted to make sure that I invited everybody to our open house on the 16th. If you're, you're welcome to come.
I'll leave from Thursday.
It's a Thursday. It's from 6:30 to 8:00. And we're having, because East Meadow's going to be 50 this year, we're doing like balloons and a happy birthday banner. And I've asked the community to submit pictures. And we're having a slideshow of just old pictures, new pictures going on in the cafeteria. So just, I wanted to invite all of you.
Anything else? Deb, I just wanted to go back to you for a little question.
I don't think so. Any questions about the facilities?
No, we're working on that. Hopefully you'll be, hopefully you'll be in there a couple more years.
So the lift is in the process of hearts being ordered. That's getting ready. The playground, we're waiting for Dave to come back and reassess.
So that hasn't changed?
It's gotten a little bigger, but not as much as it was growing before.
We haven't lost any kids.
Okay.
And what time is the open house?
6:30.
6:30. Thank you.
Deb, do you have an open house coming up?
Yes, I do. April 9th. And you're welcome to come also, 6:30.
So it's this Thursday?
Yeah.
So this Thursday and the following Thursday? Okay. Dr. Jefferson?
I had a, we celebrated nationally Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd. Many of the staff and students, you know, wore blue in honor of that. But I thought it was very, it was great to see the kids involved, you know, at different levels. And I'm very pleased that the high school students are having their volleyball tournament on the day before vacation, you know. It's a, you know, with that as a focus of it. So I, I don't even know the genesis of that, but it's just a very nice custom and tradition. So.
Actually, Crystal Dufrank, who was here earlier, she advises the freshman class. And she came to me maybe about three or four weeks ago asking about a volley, her school last year did a volleyball overnight thing.
Sure.
And I told her that maybe start off by doing something in the evening for a worthy cause. And she's going to do it from, I think, 5:00 to 11:00. It's not going to be overnight, but we're going to do, have teams from staff, assemble teams, student assemble teams and all the money that is raised will go to, you know, half of, I think, the autism awareness, the other half to the freshman class.
That's great. And we're, you know, we're continuing to do the nitty-gritty planning for next year in terms of the reconfiguration. And it's, after tonight and this morning, I feel like we're looking at a moving target based on, you know, where the staff will be and where the programs will be and what the things might look like. But, you know, I really want to commend the staff for doing a lot of good work with kids to really nail down what the needs are. So we're in a position that we can have that flexibility and have those programs in place for, you know, whatever the final goal that we wind up, you know, having to be, so.
Going to go on to David. I don't have anything eventful this month. You know, I was hoping to have some state numbers for you, but Marie, you can, they pushed out the deadline. We have our stuff in and certified, but the numbers don't become official until the state officially closes the window on air end because there's an opportunity where other districts can contest or dispute someone that we submitted, which does happen.
And we've had that before.
And we've had that happen before. And usually it's, and usually when that happens, it's usually a more, one of the more expensive students that's an help play student that it, that happens with. So I will have that for you next month. I am, I've been making phone calls. I'm working to our friends who donate stuff. And hopefully I'll have a positive update on that for you as well next month. There is stuff that I see out there and, you know, hopefully I'll have some good news on some stuff that we'll be getting soon.
Okay. Thank you. And before I go on to Emery on the collaborative, I just want to thank all of you, the administration, for the painful meetings you've been in and making recommendations. You know, I know definitely this is not taken lightly and it is painful. And we are talking an impact to students and impact to professionals and their livelihood. And, but thank you for working with Dr. Hool and bringing us a presentation and recommendation tonight, even though how painful it is.
And just try to, just try to tell your staff to hang in there, that, you know, we're not done yet, I guess, as hard as that is, especially those that are affected. In fact, everyone's affected, you know, whether they get-
I listened to the message this afternoon. It said, we're not, it's not over till it's over.
Yeah, speaking on behalf of the administrators as well, I mean, there's appreciation that we're going forward with the process. I think the real, the real challenge question comes on the first word of the handout of the financial sheets, which was minimum required contribution.
Exactly.
Because I think before we do anything else, Granby owes it to the families, to the kids, to the community, to have that discussion of, is that, is that who we are? Because there's, there's no rule that says minimum is the amount that you have to give. You know, if that's a tradition, it's got to be something that, you know, people agree on. That's what democracy is and that's what government is. So hopefully that, that discussion can happen because a lot of communities that aren't facing the financial hardships that we are here, give more than the minimum that they're required to give. And I think, you know, Judy and Archie pointed out very clearly that the resources are there. So it's not, it's not a matter of, you know, the taxes are going to go up if we have to do it. There's a way of doing that. It's the 11th hour and I think it'll take a lot of, at this point, you know, you know, a lot of, a lot of the energy, a lot of the contacts that the five of you have to do that and to really reach out to the other town officials to do that. Because it's, it's now on a person-to-person level in terms of how it goes. So those relationships, and I say this as a former school committee member, you know, calling, calling the members of the board, having those discussions, sitting down with coffee and really coming to those understandings is going to be what's going to matter in the next month. And the difference between can we go forward? Because those, that $440,000 has a huge price to it. You know, it's, can we do it? Yeah, of course we can. But it's, it's going to be a hard one to recover from if we do so. Hopefully the month can make a difference and we can move forward.
Yeah. Thank you. Emery, on the collaborative, any update?
Yeah, we had our bimonthly meeting. Two things from there. One is use of technology in early education. Collaborative offers a lot of great services and, you know, every once in a while, we get a presentation on the services that they are providing. And this month it was on use of technology in early education. The kind of things that they can do in terms of technology education with young students and get them to continuously use that technology in their own education is actually very impressive. And I was mostly impressed because, you know, if we have the opportunity, if we had the funds, if we could actually go in that direction and do something like that, our students could benefit from that from an early age. And we could hopefully and potentially could do something similar in our high school as well that we've been talking about for a while. So from elementary to all the way through high school, there is a potential of using technology. But that presentation on early education was, was very nice with a lot of good lessons learned. The other thing that was mentioned, and it was mentioned before, but they told us that was a service they were providing in smaller scale is website services. I don't know that we are looking for anything like that right now. And I'm not sure whether or not their prices will be comparable or beneficial for us. But at least as a member of the collaborative, we have access to that type of service as well if in the near or longer future, we decide to go in the direction of updating our website and do something differently with websites overall, our school district.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Jim and Emery, any update on the building project? Other than that, here there's a meeting Thursday night. Take it.
May I have a meeting this Thursday here at 6:30, I think?
Yes, in this room because of West Street's open house.
We didn't meet last Thursday, but the two Thursdays before. And the issue in terms of the, still, hopefully we'll have an answer by Thursday is from the DEP on the use of the septic system on the grounds behind East Meadow.
They have ruled and I think the architects are ready to talk more specifically about that.
Then we can talk more about the specifics in terms of renovating this building, adding on and hopefully the, without having the extra added town expense of having to have a new treatment center.
Excellent.
So hopefully we'll know more after Thursday.
Hopefully that will be ruled in our face then, so.
Yeah.
Okay. That is our agenda at this point.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Sure.
Just also in your correspondence and in your places, I just put together a little report of-
Yeah.
-the whirlwind that's been the last two weeks, two-plus weeks. I don't know if any community members have any questions or comments? If they have any answers.
Well, I can say thank you for your blog.
Yes, absolutely.
So-
That was quick.
If anyone hasn't checked out the blog yet, please check out the blog.
I'm impressed. It's beautiful.
There's a lot, there's a link to it right from the front page of the website. Our own website.
Granby Super Blogspot.com, right?
Yes. And if anybody's on Twitter, Dr. Hool is always posting on Twitter as well. We get it out there, between a few of us.
And, you know, I just want to personally thank you for the meet and greet. So, you know, that was very nice that you had that.
A cozy group.
It was very cozy. But it was still, it was still very nice. And, you know, I guess those are the types of things we want to get out there, that, you know, you're open to those meetings and coffee time, tea time and everything else.
Oh, water.
Water.
Water, too.
The water was excellent.
Were there cookies too?
Yes, there were.
Yeah, there were.
There was cookies and coffee and great conversation.
Mike, if I may, just one more note. Thank you for the blog, but I want to highlight one more event that we had. And John actually mentioned that this was the seventh year of our Men Who Cook event.
Yes.
Right? And every year, a lot of people spend the entire week in the kitchen till late hours of the evening to make sure that it happens. Those folks, folks who put the time to set up the place, folks who put the time to cook, students who came to help and serve, musicians who played. Every year, that event is something memorable, something really nice that brings the community together. So as we are, you know, as we keep on talking about events that we need to share with our town residents, this is, this is one of those. And hopefully we will have that and more in the future. And I thought of that because thank you for highlighting events like that in your blog. So if anyone does not hear about some event, you can be sure that it will be in Dr. Hool's blog in the coming days, coming weeks.
And I'm trying to make sure that, you know, I go in and keep the calendar updated on our website and keep things flowing so that people are aware of meetings that are coming, et cetera. So I am trying to really, you know, work in that regard as well. coming, et cetera, so I am trying to really, you know, work in that, that regard as well. The other thing too is that I know, Mike, you sent out a email about...
Save a date.
April 15th with Glenn Kuchar to begin the process of the superintendent search.
Did you get my email?
No. Really?
Strange.
You can tell it later.
That's April 15th, that's 6/12. Jim, did you reach out to Nestor, or did you want me to do that?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to just wait a little bit longer. They're still away, I think, but they'll, I'll get back to them.
Okay.
Since I arranged them initially, I will, but...
Okay. I just want to make sure.
If we're pretty well set, I'll get, I'll get back to them tomorrow or Wednesday.
So you'll just take that on, whatever.
I'll take, I'll call them, talk with them, or Arthur, I'll take care of that. Thanks for the reminder.
And by the way, on Saturday is our, the Lion's Pancake Breakfast, which is supporting the scholarships that go to Granby High School students, as well as the Granby Fields Committee, who does all the great work on the field, so tell everybody, please come, because that's how we raise money for those things, and all the money that we raise goes to those things. What time again?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock till 11:00.
Seven to 11:00, church at 1:00.
Give her an extra fire, I gave her.
Actually, I'll give Jen a couple to put in East Meadow School.
And we also have, the Lions, the Lions have a new vision screener, and so people can bring their, people can bring their kids to have their eyes screened for free. So just know that that's there too, and it's, it's free, and they can, this new machine can tell, can tell even from infants if there's a problem with the eyes, so. Where is it? Seven to 11:00?
It's the pancake breakfast. Do you want to add that to your blog?
Sure. Or I'll get it, at least put it up on the website.
Yeah, or on the website. Okay. We'll adjourn our regular meeting, we are going to be going into executive session, we will not be coming out into regular meeting. So to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as such discussion in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, that we will not be returning to regular session. Welcome.
Emery, a red eye.
Dan. Rukowski, eye.
Jim Petrus, eye.
Mike Quasman, eye.